For meeting of the Chesapeake Beach Town Council. Let's please start with the pledge of allegiance. Kathleen, would you lead us in the pledge? Council, you've had the agenda for several days. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. This is the opportunity for the public to make a comment on any item that is on the agenda. Dan, please state your name and where you live and what's going on.
How you guys doing? Dan DeValle. Thirty-six ten Chesapeake Beach Road, Chesapeake Beach, Maryland. Have three items for, for the agenda that are on the agenda. Questions? Questions are, the questions I asked in my public comments from last week that are recorded in a minute, are they being answered from the contracting services? My second question is with the State Highway Administration, Maryland Department of Transportation, presentation within that presentation, if the town of Chesapeake Beach, Maryland, and the State Highway Administration are aware of the active ADA complaints and/or pending cases that have been submitted to the town in SHA, MDOT, that are now in the Federal Highway Administration, would our time better be spent resolving previous issues? Items with the zoning is with, there's not really a clarity who and where this certain is at. Will the same exceptions given to one certain sing, single-family home be given to the property of an adjacent property? For example, if this were to allow for an action to do something, would the same exception be provided to a property owner who could have previously not been allowed to build because of this requirement? And are all items involving any of these certain properties being researched, such as in court records and our property sales? And I'll forward these things to you guys. I have it typed up. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
So, quick answers to your question regarding Nugent. All of the public comments that were provided to our consultant for the water and sewer analysis have been, they've been provided to them, so they have it, they're working with it now. And your questions around SHA, they'll be up for discussion during the agenda, so they can address those then. And our planning and zoning administrator is here. And so during the portion of our agenda that addresses the planning and zoning administrators' report, which is a part of the town administrators' report, she'll be up there to respond to any questions that you have.
All right, does anybody else have any comments or questions before we move on? Thank you very much. All right, I'd like a motion for approval of the minutes of the March twentieth Emergency Town Council Meeting. Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Is there a motion for the approval of the minutes of the Town Council Public Hearing of March twentieth, twenty twenty-five?
I make a motion to approve.
There's a second? Okay, we have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, the ayes have it. All right, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the March twentieth Town Council Meeting?
I make a motion to approve.
You're getting in good practice.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. All right, one more approval of minutes of the March eleventh, twenty twenty-five Town Council Closed Session. Is there a motion for approval?
I make a motion to approve.
Very well, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, thank you.
Nay.
Oh, there was a nay?
Two nays.
Two nays, okay. No passes. All right, moving right along, Positions and Communications, the Town Administrator Report. Amelia.
So, the Town Administrator Report was submitted as a part of the agenda package. Of particular note are where we are with the hiring of a new treasurer. So, the posting has been live, online. We've received over fifty applications. We're in the process of setting up initial interviews, and so those interviews will happen sometime next week. The goal is to have someone in the position within the next forty-five to sixty days. So, that's the update on that. Other activities of note are regarding our ongoing projects. So, with the State Highway Safe Routes to School project, we have a design RFP in process. So, we have submitted that back to SHA, to our grant consultant, who are going through the review process. That can take between four to six weeks. And then, once we have their approval, we'll be able to repost on eMaryland Marketplace, so that we can begin to take bids for those, for that work. Regarding the tennis courts at Beach Elementary School, we had success, we have successfully executed MOU between the town and Dr. Council. And we've had our first alignment meeting for construction work. That brought all stakeholders to the table. So, that was the county with parks and rec, the Board of Education, and town staff. And we are on track to have a vendor come out. We're going to be doing a piggybacking process with the county, and so the vendor will come on site next week with the town engineer to begin drafting the scope of work, so that we have concrete numbers, so we can move forward. So, we're in a good place with that. And, yeah.
Looking for that smile.
And then, the next section is for planning and zoning. So, I want to invite our planning and zoning administrator up to address the question that Mr. DeValle raised. And you might need to have him repeat it.
Yes, I didn't actually understand the specifics of it. It seemed to be about a special exception, and those go through Board of Appeals, and we haven't had any of those in a while, so I could use some specific information to answer.
Okay. Mr. DeValle, do you, would you like to share the specifics now? That if it's specifically if our planning and zoning administrator can answer them.
My questions were taken from the language that was within there. So, if I looked at what was written that the public hearing is on, my questions were just directly from the text inside that there.
All right. Do you mind if we follow up with you with that later? Okay, very good. Are there any other questions regarding any of the content in the Town Administrator Report?
I just want to comment, I think a lot of people would be excited about the backyard chicken idea. I've been hearing a lot of public comments about that.
I have two questions. In the report, it says there was a drafting era. Could you explain the nature of that drafting era? Related to townhouses and decks? I think we have an ordinance related to that, that Dan just mentioned.
Yes, somewhere between planning and zoning sending over the language and it being adopted by the council, the language was reverted back to not what the Planning and Zoning Commission transmitted. So, this is just you all adopting what was actually transmitted over. So, I can't, I don't know where that was made.
Okay, and it is a hard read.
Yes.
But I think I do understand what the language is trying to say, and it's trying to say that the certain houses are houses that were built before a certain date? Is that basically what the language is saying?
Yes, you were actually part of the planning commission when we did that.
It was confusing then.
Yeah, so. And, and your town attorney did a little wordsmithing to make it a little easier to understand, but it still has the same intent that was sent over. And this is just to say, for, there's a couple of pieces, but for townhouse decks, if you have an interior unit in a townhouse, under the existing zoning before this was adopted, you had to have side setbacks. And so, you really couldn't have your deck. And there are decks that were permitted without any side setbacks. So, this clarifies that. It says your interior unit doesn't need to have side setbacks for your deck. And then, it also, there's been a number of non-conforming setbacks on houses in the older areas of town where the house doesn't conform with the side setbacks. And so, when they want to put on a deck, they either need to make the deck not line up with the back of the house or come through for a variance. So, we corrected that, so that if you already have a non-conforming setback and your deck is under a certain size, you can do that without a variance.
And so, yeah, I recall our intent was to grandfather existing neighborhoods, so that everybody in the existing neighborhood could build a deck, whether they had one before or not, and to grandfather existing structures.
Yes.
But not to reverse any of the new code for new development. And so, is that what?
Yes.
This does?
Yes, that's, there's a November date. I'm not sure exactly which page it's on. It says as of November twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, which is when it was.
I tried to remember it too, thank you for looking it up.
Yeah.
And I will have questions on the second ordinance. Should I ask them now, or should I wait until we look at the ordinance?
Okay, you can wait.
Okay.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
One quick comment, just piggybacking on what John said about the backyard chickens. Actually, remember this. It was, it was our, our session or our term in twenty twelve to twenty sixteen, where the prohibition was passed. And I voted against it, and I'd be for bringing it back, so I just wanted to let you know.
Maybe the county just passed something about it.
Times have changed.
As long as you have an anchor.
You, you've softened your chicken stance, I see.
No, no, I was for allowing before. I think I was probably the only one up here at the time.
All right, and then the last thing I have is that the Easter, annual Easter egg extravaganza is still taking place on Saturday. It is a rain or shine event. If it happens to rain, the location will be at Bayside Baptist Church.
At one o'clock?
Yep. It starts at eleven thirty.
At Bayside?
Yes, if it's at Bayside, yes, very good.
Amelia, are you going to speak specifically about the Veterans Park? Or, okay, yes, I'd like to make a comment. It was brought to my attention that some of the bricks at Veterans Park, unfortunately, the, the etchings have been just obliterated, whether it's from, I mean, all I can think of is weather, water sitting on them. And, and I agree with the resident who brought it to my attention that it's, you know, it's, it's just shameful, it's very unfortunate. People have put their loved one and honored them with a, with a brick for their service in the military. And now, the, the etching is gone. So, I just wanted to make sure. I, I reached out to several other companies that actually, and I saw it on the Public Works Report that, that do etchings. And specifically, I know St. Anthony's has bricks that they've honored, as well as the Fraternal Order of Police from Prince George's County. And I contacted both of those, and the vendors are, are willing to give us prices. And I know that there's been some discussion, but I'm, I'm perfectly happy to. I'm not sure, it sounds like I've taken photographs, a massive project, because I don't know if we have the documentation now of who bought what brick at, at what time. I mean, some of them are still very visible, but others, I don't know if we'd have that information, but I'm certainly willing to, to work and to, to do the research of the ones that need to be replaced.
I appreciate that. Appreciate your willingness to help out. Having been involved in the original Veterans Park. I was, I was on the council when it was put together.
You know all those people who.
Yeah, it's all over here.
Well, I'm supposed to know everybody, right? Thank you for your offering. All right, you're going to do the treasurer's report now?
Okay.
So, the treasurer, Town Treasurer's Report was done by, prepared by me, since there's, we have an interim treasurer who's in the place temporarily. And so, the, of specific note are the dates for our budget work sessions. And so, right now, we are planning to have a budget work session on April twenty-ninth at six-thirty, and another budget work session on May sixth at six-thirty. And so, obviously, open to the public. And then, the other topic of note within this report is the monthly report of mayoral spending, which the code currently requires any expenditure over five thousand dollars to be reported, regardless of if it was budgeted. And so, that is what you will find on page two of the Town Treasurer Report. Yes.
Two questions. The May fifteenth meeting, is that, is that a budget, budget-oriented meeting? Or is that a council meeting or?
It's a council meeting.
Okay.
Where you would be voting in theory.
The other question I had was for the, the Spending Authority Report. Can we get like a brief summary under each vendor of what the work is for from now on? Like, for the fireworks, you could just say like July fourth celebration, just so we have like a quick.
Do you like it tied to the line item, or would you like it reported in a different way?
No, just right underneath the vendor, just like a quick synopsis.
Okay. That's not a problem.
Thank you.
One, I have one more comment. Under the zoning administrator's report, I noted that for March, that there were two trees removed. I know one of them, I happened to just be upon them as they were just about to start the chainsaw. And, and I inquired if they, if they had a permit, and they said yes. And I said, can I see it? And they said, you mean right now? And I said, why yes? And they did not, in fact, have a permit. So, they came to, thankfully, they, they came, Jay quickly accessed, he couldn't come out, but Billy came, the code enforcement officer, and, and determined that the tree was dead. And they came here and the town very helpfully gave them a, a permit, because the tree was dead. But I, I say all this to say that, that it's really just, to me, two, two trees within the month. And I'm not sure of the, I think the first one had maybe, I don't, I can't be sure if that one had a permit or not. But my experience has been, this would be two in a month, that the word is just not getting out. And I don't know whether we have to do a, a mailing to all the town residents about the need for a permit. I know it's currently on our website, but people seem stymied by it and surprised when I've encountered them, like, no, I didn't know that. So, I just wanted to mention that.
And what's, what's the requirement for the permit, fifty?
If it's over fifty inches, you have to, you can trim a tree, you just can't take it down, and especially in these critical areas. I mean, it, it really has an impact. And one of the trees, both of the trees that I saw this past month are in the critical area. And, and that really affects the stormwater, it affects the sloping, depending. You know, the last time the tree was being taken down, it wasn't even the owner's tree. It was on the hillside, and they just were, wanted to clear up their view, which I can appreciate. But I, I just think it's really important, because we're losing, these trees, a lot of them are over a hundred years old, and we're just losing them. And then, they're being replaced, but it's going to be, I don't think I'll be here in a hundred years to see that it grew to that length and width, but. And the last thing, I, I heard at the planning and zoning meeting when they brought up the idea of chickens, and I'm all for it, and I agree. One of the, I guess, negatives about having chickens is they're noisy. Well, I think they made a good point, they're, they're not as noisy as a dog. And there are no roosters, so there won't be the five forty wake-up call, but anyway. Thank you.
We're still on the Treasury Report, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So, yeah, thank you for providing this mayoral spending authority list here. And I think that's a great idea to have a little description underneath that John had. And I'm definitely willing to wait for the next meeting for those descriptions on the things that are reoccurring.
Yeah.
But is there anything on here that's not a reoccurring expenditure that we won't see next month? Okay. All right, and what, what is, what exactly is that for?
So, Zendesk, you can find that on the first page of the Town Administrator Report. It is a ticketing system software that we have enlisted to help with managing the requests that come in. Right now, the system that we had in place is insufficient, and it takes a lot of admin time to insert things into the system to be able to dispatch the tickets. And so, the way that Zendesk works, this soon as it, it automatically triggers a ticket to be created and doesn't require someone to manually input a ticket. So, it's in place to help with responding to town resident needs.
Okay, and that's a one-time expenditure? We don't have a, it doesn't have, require a monthly service or anything like that? Or the monthly service will be less than five thousand or?
Right, so, right now, we are enlisting it at the most basic level, so we can see how, to get the town staff trained on it, to see how it helps with responding to tickets. And there may be opportunities to expand the way that we use it. But this is the, the basic fee, and it's a, an annual fee.
Okay, all right, thanks.
I just have one, I have a question in regards to, and then you can just say it later if you'd like, but the Windmill Farms, they had, they've had two expenditures in the month, and they're, one was for almost sixteen thousand, and one was for fifteen thousand. Can you elaborate what that was for? Is that maintenance of our contract with? Okay, thank you.
I'm guessing thermo was probably an analyzer or something, thermo scientific, thermo Fisher.
That was for a replacement refrigerator for the lab, for our samples, our existing one had failed.
Good questions. Okay. Time for the Public Works Report. Jay, welcome.
Thank you. I don't know if there's any specific questions?
Yeah, the tot lot. Leave it at that.
Well, he gave you a two, a two-word question, give him a two-word answer.
There you go. It's a lot of tot. It, there's, there's been some weather hiccups lately. If you remember, that was split into two different parties. One kind of did the storm drain work in the rising of the footprint, and now the playground specialist is in there. There's a little bit of hiccup from the original design to what we've got now. We've resolved that. There's been some stormwater ponds that the county made us implement that are installed now, so everything's up to code. We're just waiting for a weather window, which I hope is next week, but it doesn't look too good to finish out that. We have a little bit more work to do out front. But I'm still hopeful for a, we're going to call it a ribbon-cutting opening mid-May. So, we're, we're definitely going to do it this spring, early summer. It's just a matter of buttoning up a few loose ends. But we're, we're a lot closer than we have been considering, we've been dealing with it for four years.
And the, the rocks that are over there, can you?
You talking about within side of the fence? So, long story short, without getting into a whole lot of detail, the, the two contractors did the work. The first contractor raised and elevated the existing tot lot. To save money, we let a rough-grade pipe installer contractor kind of do that work. The second contractor, the install is actually playground specialist, that's what they do. So, it's economical for the town to split it up. In that transition, to save money to fit our budget, when we split the, I'm sorry, when we shrunk the footprint of the equipment in the park to meet our budget, it shrunk the actual played surface. So, it didn't meet the platform that we had built. So, we still had money under the whole scope of the project. We just shifted it from the original builder over to playground specialist. So, it was kind of an extra for them, but not for the town to go ahead and surface the rest of that area. So, when you look at it today, you say, what about the stone on the left? It's actually all stone underneath, and that's, so it's an impervious surface, the water goes through it. Which, like I said, dealing with the county, nothing against the county, love you guys, but the whole place is an impervious surface where water goes through stone into the ground. And yet, we had to build under today's laws two stormwater retention ponds that probably will never get any water ever in them unless it rains on them. Just being real.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
I have just a few questions. Is there a new sewer flow meter just at the south entrance of Seagate?
No, not yet, but we are real close. We installed the power, we have the meter itself. It's just a matter of getting the tech out here that owns them and install them and implement it. So, we're, by our next meeting, we'll actually have data from it. We're that close.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
And then, I won't do specifics, but I feel like I've read ninety-five percent of the meter changeouts are done like four times now, so.
And so, what it really boils down to now, it, believe it or not, it goes all the way back to the chip shortage. As we get the meters, we're installing them, we just, we just can't get them. We did get another shipment, so we're real close, and we're down to the inside meters where we have to make, you know, we tried to expedite everything we could, which is outside meters. Now, we have to make, as we get them, appointments with homeowners, because we have to gain entry to these apartments.
Gotcha.
But, but by the end of this next quarter, when we read end of June, I think we'll be a hundred percent, hit a button, and it reads our system.
Okay, so that'll be a big time saver, once that's done.
And just to elaborate on that, it does way more than that. Every, every house that's sold in town, Public Works has to go out and get a reading, because it's, that's when you go to closing, they need to prorate it, right? So, staff in here can do it, hit a button, get a reading today, they don't even call us. It's going to be very cost-effective, and it's real-time data. When people call and say, happens all the time, everyone moved out of my house, I live alone, I only used one drop of water this month. You can pull it up and give a real data. Hey, up to this date, you've used this amount in fifteen-minute increments, so it's going to be a very accurate, cost-effective benefit to the citizens and staff system.
Okay, good, I'm sure you're looking forward to having it done, because.
It's really, it's already, because a lot of them are already online, it's already saved us a lot of time. But it also, you think about my staff driving the route, right? Physically, just driving the route, and then the discrepancies and going out and driving it again. It's going to make everything more efficient and all the data on one platform.
Nice. My last question is, it says it's, there's a public works training scheduled for May twenty-second, and it's open to the public? What does that mean?
So, I've worked with Josh, and when we take our mandated trainings, right? Moshe, OSHA, stuff like that, it's at a cost to the town. We're members of Maryland Rural Water. One of the benefits is if we can host that training, it's, when I say to the public, it's open to other people that hold licenses like us. But by facilitating this place to hold the training, it's free to us. So, that's a cost savings to everyone. It's hard to coordinate, and it doesn't happen often, but when it's up and we can host it, we take advantage of it.
Gotcha, I was going to send you my son, but he's not licensed, so.
Well, if he becomes a member of WWOA, he doesn't have to be licensed, he could attend it. And it is accredited class, and that's how it works, so.
Okay.
Yep.
Ask that along.
Sure.
Anybody else got questions for Public Works? All right, let's move on to the, what I always call the wastewater treatment plant. I'm sorry, the water. I'm sorry, the water reclamation treatment plant. It's hard to teach an old dog new tricks.
Uh, good evening. Um, just give you all a breakdown of pretty much everything else in the report. Uh, we completed our regular routine preventive maintenance checks and services. It comes through our asset management program. Um, we did have a contractor come in to do a bearing replacement on our number one aeration blower. Uh, had a vibration bearing fault. Uh, they replaced inlet and outlet bearings and then did a full laser alignment uh to align the motor with the blower. Uh, that work was completed last week. Uh, in the report, I had indicated we had solved an issue with the valve actuator. Well, of course, I mentioned we solved it. Well, it acted up again on Monday. Uh, we brought in a controls contractor that does this kind of work for us. Uh, they looked at it today. Uh, they made some adjustments to the set points, uh, but they are recommending that we purchase or order a replacement component for the inside actuator. It's an actual mechanical portion that does the uh controls of the actual switch uh that that unit's been there for ten years and operates every day back and forth, maintaining the level of the water in the filters. So it's just a wear part. Uh, once we get that in, we'll get that replaced. But right now, it should be in good order after what they've done today to get us through to when we can get that part ordered. Uh, like Jay was just saying, we have training for lockout, tagout scheduled for May twenty-second. We also have a CPR AED and first aid training scheduled for May sixteenth here at Town Hall. That's going to be primarily for uh treatment plant and public works and town staff. Uh, it's offered through Chesapeake Employers Insurance Group, I think is the name of them. Uh, I believe that's at no cost to the town that's offered by them because that's benefited to the insurer for us to have additional training. Uh, we have a max of twelve people that'll be able to to attend. And it's looking like I'm trying to go and be sending uh six of my staff that day. Uh, I had reported that the shellfish tank had been used two times. Uh, actually, we're now up to three times as of April seventh. Uh, for that rainfall of one point three six inches, we had to send two hundred eighty-six thousand gallons over to the shellfish tank uh due to excessive flow coming into the plant uh from I N I. Uh, our bio solids RFP is pending final review before being sent out for uh to go out for bid. Uh, going into our, some of the things on the end, the inventory, spare parts. We're looking at building a shortlist for final purchases to be done before the end of the fiscal year uh for just basic electrical components. We have some funding left in that line item and we're gonna try and use that to get those smaller parts that we want to stock up with. Uh, there's no change regarding additional training for maintenance for equipment. We are going to be expanding out on what the operators are able to do after hours, trying to get more people involved with being able to do the monitoring of our SCADA system and logging in and doing maintenance that they need, work that needs to be done during a rain event. Uh, we have purchased a laptop for our operators that are on call. And we're gonna be going through training, getting them up to speed to know what they're looking at, what to look for. Uh, a lot of it comes down to you kind of have to be doing it during the event to really know what you're looking at. There isn't anything I can just write down on on paper and say, here, here's what you do. It's kind of gotta be on the job as it's occurring. Uh, we're continuing work on our SOPs, uh, looking at focusing right now on the routine tasks for supervisory staff. That way, if myself or my assistant superintendent were not there, we have something in writing to be able to provide somebody coming up that could handle the reports that we have to send off, the testing that needs to be done, uh, how to process time sheets, how to process the um invoices and stuff like that. Uh, right now, the I had referenced the narration project, we bumped that back to F Y twenty-eight uh just to accommodate the headworks project because of the costs that's gonna be incurred with that. Hopefully, we're able to get grant funding for that and the cost won't be as significant as what we're looking at. I'm just wanting to make sure we don't stack up too much in the uh capital projects uh thirty years. And the sightlights RFP is pending final review before going out for uh bid. Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, you talked about the advanced training opportunities. Um, how long uh typically as a member of your staff, I know you cross-train them, but how long are they in a position before uh they'd be eligible for promotion? And does it just entail um training opportunities? Or wha- what else is involved in a promotion for an employee?
Generally, right now, we have two trainee levels. Uh, the for a trainee one to be promoted up to trainee two, that's a time and service uh for three years. Uh, basically, the we use the guidelines for the renewal for their license. Uh, at the end of their three years, they need to have all of their credit hours for their license. They need to have made an attempt on the wastewater five A exam. And why is my and there's one more thing that's just slipping my brain right now. Basically, they need to meet the requirements for license renewal. If they're not able to renew their license, they're not able to continue working there, so we wouldn't probably not even retain them. Uh, at the end of that three years, they're promoted to either trainee two or ideally they pass their exam and get promoted to operator one.
And that's a state exam?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and my other question is, um, have the rags lessened this month?
Not that I'm aware of. I haven't heard anything about being more significant, but I also haven't heard anything about being less.
Okay, because I didn't see it in your report and I thought maybe it was resolved.
I I will have to follow up with my staff just to double check on that, but that that's something that I haven't heard anything as it being increased. Uh, when we do have these big rain events, we do tend to get a slug of rags come through. And I think that comes down to sometimes the stuff builds up in locations along the collection system uh manholes on steps for the manhole structure, stuff like that. When you have that sudden flow of water come through, it just pushes everything to us at one time. So sometimes during these heavy rain events, we do need to go out there and keep that rack clean more frequently than we do during a regular day.
Thank you.
All right, just a quick question. The SOP you're working on, is it basically revisions or are you creating something new from your perspective?
For in regards to supervisory stuff, it is new. Uh, in regards to normal tasks in the plant, it's revisions. So a lot of the stuff was in place and we're just revising it. Um, the formatting that was required by previous supervisor uh doesn't fit very well. It's not very clear and it's it just.
Do you have a timeline for that and when you might be done?
Uh, we've actually been working on it for quite some time. Uh, we probably about a year or so, we've been going through revising it. But there's a lot of steps and procedures. Right now, we're concentrating on the lab for SOPs, so we get everything concise in there because that's the most complex stuff that needs to be as clear as possible. And then we can start getting into the stuff that's out in the plant.
And this is gonna be digitized where they can jump on their phone and find the app or be able to just look at how easy is it gonna be to assess it?
My intent is to put it into a digital format where it'll be in a uh PDF format. It'll have uh hyperlinks to say if one, um, I'll say when if we'll have an SOP for like doing our nutrient testing. It'll be just for the nutrient testing. But then in that nutrient testing, we'll refer the specific, say ammonia testing. We have a powder pillows, what we call them, test, which is one type, or our TNT test tubes. So it'll reference to a SOP for how that gets performed.
All right, so you have.
If they need that.
There to go, okay.
Right, and then ideally I'll have a hyperlink in the ones to reference back to the original. So if there's, say, this particular SOP is part of a larger one, it'll have a link so you could go back to the main uh procedure.
Thank you.
Okay, I I wanna compliment you on your reports. I think they are thorough and I think the photographs that you typically provide in your reports are very helpful. I know all of the members of the council have now been through the walkthrough or the the several hour walkthrough of the plan and learning. So I just wanna compliment you on on what you've done since we've taken office.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, one I have one question, uh, maybe it's more directed to you, Mr. Mayor, but um in new business, we have approval of payment for pressure reduction valve. Is the is that within the uh wastewater treatment plant scope? That's you, okay. Do are we gonna discuss that at the time we're considering it or?
Well, I, to be honest with you, I'd like to just move along on the agenda uh because we have several people here that are probably gonna want to leave as soon as we get to their part of the agenda. Uh, they may be sitting in the back row on this side. So uh I wanna honor their time, so we'll get to it, Eric.
Uh, how is the LED upgrade going? Are we doing that in-house or contractor or?
The sightlights, we are waiting to put that out for bid. Uh, this will actually be our second bid going out. The first bid went out, we had a vendor who signed a contract and then after signing, he followed up business. And then it just, that was in the transition period between the administrations. So we're working to get that back out there.
Okay, do we do we have an estimate on how many kilowatts like we're gonna save by converting everything?
I don't know that number.
That'd be that'd be good if we could calculate it. I don't know how intensive that would be, but we might be able to get some sort of rebate from like B G E or.
That is referenced in the uh RFP that we're supposed to uh, they're supposed to provide that information back to us.
Okay, cool.
Great, thanks. All right, um, unless anybody else has anything else for the wastewater treatment plant? Um, we we will move on to the town engineers report. Um, Wayne is not able to be with us tonight. Uh, council members, you have his written report. Anybody have any questions that we can relay back to him or any any comments? That's Eric.
Um, just to my knowledge, um, you know, I think a lot of a lot of the council have been trying to um help with finding bidders for the water park, uh, the different scope items that we know are gonna are gonna have to we're gonna have to tackle. And um, I just wanted to ask, I mean, Jay, I know you were involved a little bit, but I'm I'm I'd like to see some cooperation with some um uh some bidders who I know are eager to bid the work, but just can't seem to get any information from um from the from the town engineer as far as any um reports or drawings or anything that would be needed to to put a bid together, um, let alone communication. So I just just wanted to make that comment.
I I relayed some of that to Wayne and um, and I know he heard it, so I I when he's back here or whatever, we'll reach out and speak to that. I don't wanna speak for him. Anybody else?
Okay, moving right along, Calvert County Sheriff's Office.
Lieutenant Hollinger is at a different meeting, so he apologizes, but he has not yet figured out how to split himself and be two places at once.
Believe he's just about a mile to the north, isn't he?
Yes, I believe that comes at the captain's level. Um, so.
Thank you for being here, and you are?
Thank you, Gilmore. Um, for the beach.
Great.
The crazy lady you see running around with dog biscuits and everything.
Uh.
Been working up here since twenty eighteen.
Great.
We have the written report.
Do you guys have any questions? Uh, March was a typical month for us in the Twin Beaches area.
I do have a question. I know it's not specific to March, so I'll just bring it up to recent. Uh, obviously, there was a child that was hit uh near Beach Elementary uh last week or the week before. Um, and I know, I hope that spars some additional conversations with State Highway uh to to discuss uh some options there, whether it's a crosswalk or or something. But uh is there, I know I see a resource officer, I think, that does uh, many times I've seen him there, but um is is there one that's that's there or something that we should look at uh that we can control, that we can do to to help um support that? So we, I mean, that's terrifying to, you know, like I I saw the message come across, my kid was also at beach. And of course, you know, the first thing you do is start running down the list of who you know.
Great, um, so the when the, before the new construction was complete, we were there daily. Um, whether it was the resource officer or us, depending on what they're uh, what they were able to do because there's not enough resource officers for all the schools yet. Um, now that the new construction is in place, the new traffic pattern's in place as far as for parent pickup, bus drop off, all of that, the resource officers have have said that they don't need patrol's help anymore. Um, they call out if there's some specific event or, you know, something is going on that's larger than usual. But um for now, that is my understanding is that we're we're kinda stood off here. So um, I don't know if maybe talking to State Highway about like those calming zones like like you see by Locust Grove, the the rumble strips. And that's a, you know, a calming zone for your driver, but also the people walking, they can hear that maybe.
Okay.
State Highway is actually here tonight, so.
All right.
They are here.
Well, I I would, they're gonna talk about, okay. Well, I'll just reiterate that's, I mean, the child got hit, so uh extremely important to address.
The child got hit on, but n- not on the state highway. It was on Fourteenth Street.
Right, I know.
And and it was uh, and the child was actually waiting to catch the bus because they don't cross the street. Uh, and um, Samelia and I uh actually were there shortly after it happened and went through the whole thing and Lieutenant Hollinger joined us. And and so uh that was a a terrible thing to happen. Um, and I don't, I I think, from my understanding, the car was going southbound and making a left turn on the Fourteenth Street. And there was a lot of oncoming traffic and as soon as the oncoming traffic dissipated, they made that left turn and the child was in the in the street. And I think that's what happened. Yes, we need to do whatever we can to protect our children and and protect the school the the best we can. There's no question about that.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
I'd I'd like to just make a a comment and I have a question. Um, as I've said repeatedly, I I cross that uh in front of Beach Elementary every day. And um, it's not only dangerous uh for the children, but myself as an adult, and I usually have a dog or two. Um, it's only at the generosity of the driver that I cross. If they wanna stop, I get to cross. If they don't, I just wait until there is no traffic. And I said it before, um, somebody is gonna get hit. Um, and recently we had this incident, although it wasn't on Fourteenth Street. I it wasn't in front of the school. Um, but it's still, it's, people go there for many reasons and especially with the Board of Education, with the tennis courts opening, you're gonna have people crossing in the summer, adults and children. And we definitely have to make that a crosswalk. And if it can't be a crosswalk, a flashing sign. Uh, but there has to be something done to keep us, the residents and whoever is crossing, safe. And my only other comment is, what's a D O P?
Destruction of property.
Gotcha, thank you.
I I I wanna comment a little bit what you said. Um, one of the other issues there at that particular intersection, Fourteenth Street, is if you're on the west side of two sixty-one, there's no sidewalk there. All there is is a drainage ditch. And so it's really not a good place to cross the street and that's not actually what was happening in in this situation. And so uh, there it's much better if you're crossing at Old Bayside Road, if you're gonna cross. Uh, and also on the east side of two sixty-one, there's no sidewalk. And so uh that means that crosswalk being marked and all that sort of stuff i- is is simply not gonna happen to the best of my understanding.
Uh, well, I understand that, Mayor, respectfully, and and there isn't any, you know, um, crosswalk on the other side of the street. But I think a lot of people cross at Old Bayside. And I guess when this incident happened, I was terrified that you used to not have children be able to walk to school because they wanted them just for that reason. But then with COVID, people could, parents could walk their children. But I think peo- a lot of people do cross at Old Bayside because it's kind of the way it's set up, it's with the the sloping sidewalk, it's like more welcoming.
Well, and and I will say that uh Samelia and I spent, I don't know, hour and a half down there that morning. And I I the visibility from Old Bayside, when you cross at Old Bayside, is way better than it is from Fourteenth Street. You can't see what's coming up the hill from when you're on Fourteenth Street. But if you're on Old Bayside, you've got good visibility in both directions, so you can, you would know to wait. But um, I think that we're all somewhat horrified that this child was struck by a car. Uh, I I I think everybody in the room would agree that that should have never happened and it and it's a terrible shame. And anything that we can do as a town, we wanna do. Uh, I don't know what else we can do at the moment. Um, but that is uh a significant concern. And and again, the child was not crossing Old Bayside, they were waiting for the bus. Um, so that was that was what we found and Eric, you had something else?
Yeah, I just wanna say, I think everybody up here is kind of in the know and maybe everyone in in the uh Town Hall too, but maybe. Yeah, I just wanna say, I think everybody up here is kind of in the know and maybe everyone in, in, in the uh, Town Hall too, but maybe not. If this is news to anybody, I just wanted to say that as far as I know, the child is fine.
Yes, he's fine.
And that hasn't been said yet, so I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you for bringing that up.
You were saying rumble strips might be a good deterrent on it, on that street.
I don't know what State Highway's requirements are for those at all.
Not interrupt, Corporal. Uh, State Highway is here and so that's part of the agenda is that we'll be engaging in uh, a conversation around what, what options we may have.
Uh, well, thank you for mentioning that.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else have any questions?
Thank you for your service. And um, we are coming up on budget cycle, so um, if your department thinks of anything that the beaches should be thinking about uh, to make your job easier, please communicate that. To Town Hall.
Great. Thank you.
We have one here today. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here. It is time for the North Beach Volunteer Fire Department. Gentlemen, would you like to come forward? Well, thank you all for being here tonight. Um, uh, please introduce yourselves to our public. Uh, we have Larry Jaworski, former council member here, who is also a member of the Volunteer Fire Department. Gentlemen.
I'm uh, John Tippin, I'm Deputy Chief and uh, pleasure to be here again this month. Chief Stanton's working this evening.
Billy G., President.
Thank you all for being here. Uh, it has been the practice of the town of Chesapeake Beach to make a significant contribution to the North Beach Volunteer Fire Department over the years. Uh, and uh, and this is our, our fifth meeting as this council. Um, and the previous uh, council, uh, Larry Jaworski, being a member of it, uh, when they put the budget together, they put a budget together that included uh, a donation for the North Beach Fire Department and it's fifty dollar, I mean fifty thousand dollars. And I would like to bring that out to you right now. I'll get one. No, Price is Right check. I got a few, whoever else wants.
Good to see you, Larry.
Better than the check in the mail.
But I did have a fire in my house in the North Beach Volunteer Fire Department, saved my house. Uh, and we were out for a year to rebuild it. I'm so grateful.
Already paid. Already paid handsomely with this.
It's always nice to be able to do something like that for the good of the community. And those people deserve a lot of credit for what they do. It is time for the mayor's report. I'll try to be uh, quick. Um, some of this has already been covered by uh, our town administrator. The search for new treasurer is progressing. Uh, in the interim, we have a temporary Dan Baden, um, who has a lot of experience and Zach Cron, who is our accounting technicians and they've stepped up to serve the town needs and the budgeting process is moving forward nicely. Uh, I wanna announce that uh, Wendy Patton, stand up Wendy, is uh, being added to the town staff as executive coordinator. I've known her uh, for years through church and she and Samelia are quite close and are neighbors. Uh, and she's already, she really helped me get my stuff organized in the office, so I know it's gonna be good for the whole town, so glad you're here.
And she is my wife's uh, my wife's worship director also, and Samelia's.
I don't know that everybody heard that. They were still clapping, say it again.
I said she was the worship director for my wife at church as well.
Yep, we have a number of people from the church here, we sure do. Uh, we've already talked about the child that was hit. I was uh, gonna mention that, um, but I think I'll just uh, I'll move forward on that since we've already discussed that. Um, significant progress is being made on the water park. Jay's gonna have more of that later and Paddock Cool is the original builder, the owner is here. Uh, they will be talking to us and Marilyn Van Wagner, is, is Marilyn here? Yeah, okay, Marilyn is here and she's a great help since she ran the park for years. And, okay, recently, I had a meeting with uh, Mayor Mike Benton of uh, North Beach. Uh, we share the wastewater treatment plant, uh, and we had a whole lot of things to talk about. And so we've got a really good dialogue, dialogue on between the two beaches now. Uh, and I'm, I'm really uh, pleased to say that we're, we're working um, really quite well. About, uh, it was last week, uh, he asked me to join them, uh, join him with a group of students from the Anchor Christian Collaborative uh, at the North Beach Town Hall and apparently they come there every year. And uh, my predecessor attended in, in the past with them. But there were twelve students there and I was just honored to, to be with those students, learning about municipal government and they were all, all the students were sitting up on the dais and got their pictures taken and that sort of thing at the North Beach Town Hall, very nice. Um, we had, recently had a um, tot lot meeting uh, with, that included Melanie Lovelace, uh, whose child is honored at the tot lot. And Jay, uh, you, you've already mentioned that, so. Um, and also at North Beach Volunteer Fire Department, I attended Wally Gooding's uh, retirement celebration. I've known Wally practically ever since I moved to the beach. Uh, he, he was in a, he ended up being a major in the DC Fire Department, but he was a volunteer at North Beach Volunteer Fire Department here. And I just wanna recognize Wally Gooding as he retires from uh, the DC Fire Department. Um, I, earlier, uh, within the past week, participated in the Calvert Memorial Hospital Donate Life flag raising ceremony. Uh, afterwards, my wife and I, Becky, uh, and I had a detailed tour of the hospital seeing the nursery facilities which are in need of renovation and they're seeking funding, so council members, we may be requesting that we authorize some funding to the hospital for, for that, not right away. Um, and also there is the previous administration and I believe this occurred during COVID, so I don't know that very many people are aware of this. Uh, but the previous administration had donated a significant amount of money uh, to the hospital for renovations uh, on one of the units. And there is a uh, a room, uh, a patient's room that is the Chesapeake Beach uh, memorial room uh, at, at the Calvert Memorial Hospital. And so it was interesting to see that. So that's all I've got there. Let me get to the next page. All right, special presentation, Arbor Day presentation.
So uh, as a part of us being a tree city, um, the Arbor Day Foundation uh, requires that we do an annual proclamation in honor of Arbor Day. Um, and so that is provided in the agenda package. Um, so it's officially proclaiming uh, April twenty-fifth is Arbor Day in the town of Chesapeake Beach. And um, the town council would need to sign it.
Council willing to sign it? I'll pass it along. Sign it and, and we'll pass it back and we'll pass it back down. Thank you. All right, water park updates. Jay, take it away.
I'm gonna need some help with a PowerPoint. Um, so while that's coming together, I just wanna read it, read some stuff. I didn't take that picture. I'm only kidding.
Is that what the water parks would look like when we're done?
And I'll be honest, I just took thirty-six hours of classes. I need to hold my license and I do not like PowerPoints. But I wanna read, I wanna read this, uh, it's a statement I prepared and I'm gonna read a few things 'cause I don't like to just sit here and read a PowerPoint either, but a little background, um, and it's, I know I've met with the council, I've met with the committee and a lot of people and, and I'll be honest, this is more for the public. Um, so before the slideshow, I wanna go over, you know, what I've been working on. When, when the mayor and new council took office, one of the first meetings I had with the mayor, um, he asked me, Jay, what is it gonna take to make the water park safe and to get it open? Um, and my response was, there's no way we can do it this year. I know that for a fact, but I, I truly felt um, w- with a year being shut down, we look at it internally and let me start looking at these things, pulling different players. Um, I was optimistic that we could go a certain way. Um, and while it was closed, let's look at all of it, right? And there's updates that we need to do. Um, with the help of staff, former staff, I, we would never be as far along as we are without it. Um, I really started digging around investigating. I've been to, you know, I've been here twenty years, uh, and I've been to places in that park in the last three weeks that I've never been in. We had to make some penetrations and do some stuff. Um, so, you know, we also had to do a lot of this thirty-year-old equipment as it's still available. I met with uh, our pump supplier that does our wet well pumps and I found what we could retrofit, what we could get off the shelf. I started really going down this path of, let's keep this in-house and let's do it. Um, 'cause believe me, I've been here twenty towns, it's twenty years, it's my goal. Where I can step in and fix it, or even if the town's the GC, I know the value, I know the bureaucracy it saves and I know the cost savings. And, and today, let's be real, permitting and all these other things is just time-consuming, whatever. So I just wanted to put that out there. I was tasked with the job, I dove in, I was optimistic we could do this. Hence this power slide, because I've, I've kinda done a one-eighty. Um, but I wanna show, I know the council's a little more in tune, the, the committee's way more in tune. I'm still shaking from being out there this afternoon. I got a little colder than I thought. Um, but I wanna show this slideshow and I'm gonna read through it. And the reason it's a lot of pictures is because pictures don't have an agenda, they don't lie, they're timeless and it gives everyone that's involved, you know, I live here too and I go to Roland's and you hear conversations in front of you, they don't know who I am and I've heard the craziest things out there and I'm like, let's get the record straight, let's show you the real deal. So here we go. I'm gonna have to lean on Samelia to be mine. Um, so, like I said, one of the main reasons for this was the general public is driving by the park at thirty miles an hour, looking at it at a hundred feet, and if you look at it, you're like, why isn't the park open? Um, so bear with me, I'm gonna go through this PowerPoint and keep in mind, it's only seven minutes long, so pay attention. Um,
I'm running my stopwatch.
There you go. Um, so addressing the leaks, uh, I, I could have forty-seven pictures. If you look on the lower right, we've penetrated the park forty-seven times. Um, I shared with the council and a few other people, I started in two thousand six. My first day at work was a water main break in Richfield Station. My second day at work was a broken water line at the water park. So this is nothing new, right? I've been living it for twenty years. If you look on the left-hand side, that hole that we had to excavate to get to some, some failed electrical lines in that case, is outside of the piled park. And I, and I wanna be clear about these three scenarios, so everyone understands, there's been a lot of talk, the park's piled, it's not supported, dirt's settling. So in this case, this is outside of the supported pile. So what happens is, if you think about the water park as a cake, in this place, when something sinks, from the icing, all the way down, sinks. So when you dig a hole, the dirt's right below it, because there's nothing holding it, that slab is floating on the dirt. So we have to tunnel twelve, fifteen foot under there, get to this broken conduit that happened to be for that light. That's one scenario. Middle screen is a scenario where we penetrate through the pool. The pool itself is supported. Um, but the dirt under it is grabbing the plumbing and pulling it down as it sinks and the pool doesn't sink. So that return is stuck in the concrete. When the dirt pulls down on the next slide, you'll see what happens. Third scenario, that's the decking. That area, just like all these other areas, was never designed on the original build to go back. When we go into those areas, what you find is a process of building the pool, and I don't blame them. Their waste product, their slurry, the concrete trucks, everything rinsed out in those areas. So when we go in there, we have to bust through anywhere from six to eighteen inches of slurry, concrete, waste debris, and then start tunneling. Could you change a slide, please? So this is what you typically find, right? Snap fittings. Middle picture is perfect example, that's looking through the pool. All the plumbing is there and then when the dirt sinks, it snaps and it breaks. Same thing on the right. So I'm just trying to, people say, well, what's going on or, or what's happening? This has happened forty-seven times where we had to cut through the pool. You can put in another twenty times where we could get to it without cutting into the pool. Next slide, please. Okay, so I had a plan, when I, like I said, when the mayor, um, first asked me about this, then, and I'm just gonna give you the scope of work. Everything in green, I was planning on going into this pool, saw cutting open, replacing twelve-hundred foot of plumbing, pouring it back into the slab, so it would solve the settling problems. Um, and I have insight, I've done it. And I had a plan, it was pretty simple, I was gonna enact it. What you see in pink were new entry doors I wanted to put in, so we could access some of those other areas I told you about. Not replace those plummings where the uh, skimmers are, but be able to get to them if they did fail. And I wanna be clear that where the little blue dots are all around the outside of the river, those drains was not even part of my plan. They haven't failed. They're bigger in size and they're also laying across the grade beams, so they haven't failed. That wasn't part of it. Everything in yellow was concrete I knew I had to remove and replace, including the propulsion pump which broke off on the left, which was quite a big, quite a big task. Um, could you go to the, so in that scope of work, I was like, I'm gonna saw cut twelve-hundred foot of trenches on the pool. What is that gonna do to its integrity, right? Big question. This happened after State Highway built their bridge, okay? So one of the things I learned, um, with all these vendors and different contractors, paddock specifically, and, and this is different material than this, than the floor. I'm cutting through the floor, has aggregate, way stronger PSI concrete. This is more of a grout gunite, right? They shoot the walls with. And if you look in the picture, you can see it's, it's kinda rotted, it's crumbled. It's not integratable. There were seven areas, you, I didn't, pictures of them all, so in my mind, originally, I'm thinking that's a one and done, we don't have to deal with it again. Um, if you can go to the next slide, please. What I found in the park, there's other signs of many of these areas and you can flip through, I'll tell you when to stop, Samelia. There's another one, uh, you can go there, so if you can stop here for a second. If you look at those horizontal cracks, that's not the white coat that's failing. The white coat is showing the failed wall behind it, same scenario. You can go to the next one. So there's several areas, uh, you can go to another one, please. That, those are another areas. In other words, these are just waiting in the wings, it could be next year, it could be five years, but they're gonna fail. So then I started looking at, okay, what is it gonna cost to cut out every pool wall inside the river, outside the river, twelve-hundred foot of wall? Right, to get to what? To new walls, but still the same floor that I'm cutting twelve-hundred foot out of. Um, uh, could you go to the next slide? Okay, so then we go um, to the rocks. And let's call it the rocks and waterfalls. If you drive by the, the pool in your car, which I do, right, my wife does too. What the hell's going on over there, Jay? Um, it's, you don't see this. So I wanted to go through a few slides. Th- these rocks, um, are thirty years old period, right? In a very hostile environment, cold, hot. Um, originally, they were waterproof on the outside. What I, what I think and what I found is the inside was a little pervious, it's, it's a caustic environment there, chlorine water and over the years, they had failed. I've been watching them over the years, right? And I thought, well, maybe we can go in and fix it. But before I wanted to commit, I did a way more in-depth survey, inside and out, so we can flip through a few pictures. Um, when these rocks separate, we've patched them many times. What I found is, once you get that initial separation uh, from the pool level to the a- above pool, you can, never can fix it. Those two entities are moving at different rates, expansion and contraction. It's just a never-ending scenario. We can go through a few more pictures. But I wanted to take my time and share these pictures. take my time and share these pictures so the public can say, hey, that, you know, there are real problems. In some areas, you have total separation, like on the left. On the right, you have a lot of hairline cracks that, that we've patched 50 times. Uh, you can go through. Here's a perfect example, the pool up to the structure, that joint, uh, you know, I'll get into it later. We've had the prior administration fly people out from, some from California. This administration, we brought in experts. Um, none of them are willing to say, hey, we can fix this, fix these rocks. Uh, we can go through a few more pictures. So wherever phosphorus is coming into the pool, like you see on the left, when the pool is full, that water is leaving the pool. Um, these cracks on the right, same way. And, and my point of these pictures is when you look at it from the road, you don't see this. But we can keep going. More separation, more failed rocks. Um, all of these are maintenance. All of these cost money because pool water leaks. All of these are a pain to deal with, but they're not a safety hazard. And we're going to get to that. So, so keep, there's some more, we can keep going. Uh, on the right is where a piece of rock broke and then you, then you see the exposed, they're actually kind of built like a boat. Um, we'll let Paddock speak to that maybe later, but it's like a fiberglass, it's almost built like a boat. You shoot your color, your gel coat, whatever's on the outside, and you bring these pieces on site and you kind of glue them together. With, in layman's terms, on the left, same thing. Here's some more on the right. Um, so we'll, we'll go through, I promise seven minutes, we can keep clicking. Okay. This is, this is a picture that's worth a thousand words, right? On the left, now I'm inside of this cave and I'm looking out. Tho- those aren't windows, those are cracks in the rocks, right? So you can't appreciate how much they failed unless you get in here and look. On the right is an example of the steel skeleton, if you will, when the rocks were built. A lot of that steel, keep in mind, was temporary until all the rocks were, were pieced in place. And then the rocks themselves are pretty structural, but not completely. So the steel has failed over the years. You, you can see what you have over on the left. Uh, next slide, please. When I started to notice some of these things, this is a waterfall inside of the cave, that's 1,700 pounds of water. On the left, you see the steel is gone. So what Public Works did, we went in there and we built from the fixed foundation, what's not sinking and blocked up to them to support them. Um, in this case, even if that waterfall failed, it's behind the scenes, no one's going to get hurt. Either way, it had to be fixed. We can go to the next slide. Same here, we didn't have an opportunity to go to the footer, so we added steel to support another waterfall. If you don't know, there's 11 waterfalls over there. Over time, we've abandoned three of them. Um, we can go to the next slide. So all those cracks, all those leaks, um, every year I go in and I air test the plumbing, which means you cap off all the ends, you pump it up with air and you can say, okay, we have a leak, you find it, you fix it. Every year we find leaks. Even when we resolve all of that, um, can you go back one? Even when we resolve all of that, all those cracks in that pool, they leak. And by design, it all drains back into the pump room. So that water you see on the right, 24/7 leaks out of that pool, six gallons a minute. Every day the pool's open. Um, you, you replace it with 57-degree water out of the ground. Causes cold water. In some areas, in the middle of the summer, not only do we have to replace the water, we had to cook propane to heat it. And then you add your chemicals. So we can go to the next slide. This is where there's a lot of hearsay out there, last administration shut it down, whatever. I'll tell you right now, I am the one that notified the mayor and staff. But we got problems, it's no longer safe, this is it. Um, this area is the cave. Uh, I know the water park committee was out there today and saw it firsthand. I don't know if you can appreciate it from these pictures, but this is a, a pre-stressed concrete slab that's built off-site. And if you bring, if you think about it, it's like Lincoln Logs. They bring that in and they sit it on the wall and then they stick these fake rocks, if you will, on top of it. What is on top of those slabs could fail and, and be okay, but it's supported by it. What I had major concerns with are the parts of rocks that are cantilevered over or actually stuck to the bottom that have completely failed. Um, next slide, please. That's what you're looking at. So this, if you want to enter the cave, there's a piece that already fell out. You can see that horizontal crack. My fear was, and you see it's all been penetrated, the water's gotten there, it's freeze and cracked. Had a real fear this could fall and severely hurt someone, if not knock them out and drown them. So we blew the whistle, um, got to be addressed. And, and that with the last administration led to a comprehensive plan, started looking at it and we all know the three scenarios. Um, so we can go to the next slide. Same thing, uh, different rocks. Keep going. This is a view from inside, so that is above, uh, public space, right? If that fails, someone gets hurt. Next slide, please. This is on the left-hand side. I was over there this afternoon with the water park committee. We couldn't climb up on the outside where I have, but that is obviously complete separation of a structure that's two stories in the air, right? Over people. Cannot go on like that. Um, next slide. Same thing here, these areas, uh, you can see where the whole wall is almost going to shift off of the support. Had real concerns. Just wanted to relay that, yes, there were 100% safety issues that I didn't feel comfortable with. That's why it was shut down. Uh, next slide. Another failed area, another crack. Uh, next slide. We can keep going. Same thing, just trying to show you that it's not like a one-spot thing, it's global with all these rocks. Uh, okay, let's get to the slide tower. I spoke of, there were seven different entities that looked at this park. No one wanted to entertain fixing this. Um, but we did find a company, I'm not going to mention names or whatever, that said they can come in and fix it. And they're very reputable and, and I'm not going to say they couldn't. I'm just going to say I don't know how it could be done and I don't know if it's the right thing. So we're talking about fixing this with sanding and painting. Um, you can go through the next slide. This is the roof of the tower. On the left is one of the handrails, uh, next slide. And I'm just giving you the dirty reel, this is it. These pictures don't lie, right? You can see it for yourself. Um, you can go to the next slide. So on the left, you can stick your finger behind the paint, right? There, there's nothing left. It was encapsulated at one time. Um, but once that raw steel has been affected, I don't care how much you painted or think you're going to fix it. Once the steel on the inside's been affected, there's, there's no fixing it in my mind. So you're looking at minimally replacing that. Um, next slide. Same thing, that roof, you can stick your finger through it. Um, this is an example, I was working for the town, this is already an afterthought. Um, it's one of those things, we got a price to build it out of raw steel. Um, and we got a price to build it out of stainless steel. And I'll be the first one to tell you, the stainless was three times as much, so we went with the raw steel, but this is what you get. Uh, next slide. These are, this is a picture of one of the feature slides that in the one process, they're talking about, yeah, there's a company that can come out here and rebuild this 30-year-old slide. But I'm looking at it, I've seen it rebuilt over 20 years, five times. Um, is it, at what point do you say it's done, right? So I've, I've kind of reached that point. We can go on to the next slide. This is the pump room. Um, like I said, it's a it's a caustic environment by design. We're injecting chlorine, right? We use tablet feeder, um, in this same room where all the equipment is. It's a very caustic environment, chlorine gases off. And then you're fighting yourself 24/7. These are the pumps that are there. This is, this is what it is. I know the public doesn't see this. I wanted to be clear with what, what we're dealing with. Next slide. The, this is some of the hardware that's there. Um, it's, let's face it, 30 years old. Some of these pumps, some of these have been replaced or rebuilt, but it is also due to the environment. Next slide. Okay. By design or however, everyone can point fingers, right? 30 years later. But that's the exhaust fan for that room that's up on the ceiling, but chlorine gas sinks. So chlorine gas has, that's a five-year-old fan. That gives you the idea of the caustic environment of that nature. On the right is where it's infiltrated by rain all the time because some of these rocks that have failed, there's no getting behind them to caulk or seal. So rainwater comes into the pump room every time it rains. Uh, we can go to the next slide. That's an outlet, that's another piece of roof. Um, just, you know, typical of what's in there, don't get me wrong, we've replaced a lot of stuff and done different things over the years, but and what we did replace, we replaced, right, plastic, um, schedule 80 piping and less corrosive things, but you still have original parts of the park. Uh, next slide. So this is, um, an example, and I know, uh, looking at original plans and different things, I'm not going to say I know it all, but I do know that the town value engineered some of the original design. Um, the reason I show this picture, you don't see the fourth piece, but there's four pieces of stainless steel in that park. They're the only four pieces I know of. And I've been 90% of that park above and below it now. And moving forward, I can't stress enough, as staff, right? I'm not an elected body, I didn't, I'm just trying to advise. The, what must happen moving forward to get the longevity of this park? Um, I don't think there's any value in fixing any of that stuff we just looked at. You're throwing bad money or good money on top of bad money, is my opinion. Um, I'm going to turn it over to Paddock here a little bit because there's several reasons. One is they're the original builders, um, and I've met Mark personally out there over 20 years, many times, who came to the town, recognized, you know, we had budgets before, we had plans and they just never got passed in here. I'm not pointing fingers to anybody. So there's insight from that company that some could've, should've, would'ves. Um, anyone can look back and say, do it better, but I, I have a list of 13 things that some are something that, um, we definitely cannot do. And there are six of them are some things that I think we should do. Like I said, separating chemicals, stainless steel, expansion and rocks are just all in my head. Um, but we'll capture that moving forward. And the rea- the reason I want to go straight from me before I take any questions to Paddock is because they may answer some questions or you may have even more questions. Um, but I do know specifically the benefit of if we move forward with them, their insight, their original knowledge of building it, they already have some plans. And I think they're in tune with, I know they've heard it from me over 20 years, with a lot of the pains and a path forward on what we're trying to accomplish and what we're trying to do. And without going too much into detail, I would just like to turn it over to them. Um, and I hope for the public, maybe that's not in this room, that's listening or whatever, that that inform them and you got to see the real condition and that the park was shut down by me, um, for a reason. Public safety and what happened after that happened. So this is the last picture. It's kind of like, you're going to pay upfront and do it right with stainless. If not, this is what you're going to end up with very soon. Um, and, and I want to go back to, you know, like I said, a lot of rumors, a lot of speculation, it's nothing political. We shut it down, I'm a thing of safety. I think this body ran on, let's get this park up and going. There's a way forward and I think it's a also effective for many reasons, path that's going to be time-sensitive in a way to do this. And that's all I can say from there. We'll let Paddock give us spiel.
Thank you. Thank you, Jay, for very thorough.
Did I keep it under seven minutes?
No.
No, no way.
23?
Yeah.
It was, it was needed though.
I was just seeing who was timing me.
And if you want to introduce the folks from Paddock?
I will. Uh, Bart?
That's on.
I'm here to give a spiel.
Spiel away.
I want to thank the, uh, mayor and the council for giving us a chance to talk to you. Uh, this particular park is dear to me. It was, uh, it was quite an effort when we first built it. It was a very, very successful, made us very proud. And I've been out here more than once. Uh, Jay and I crawled underneath there. I, I was muddy than, muddier than a hunting dog and learned a lot. I'm here with two of my coworkers, Natalia and Gensho. Uh, they volunteered to come along. We've built a new water park every year together, the last three years. And we want to take the town out to show some of those water parks to you. One of them's coming out, just finishing, supposed to be open May 16th. Uh, it's always a rush. Uh, but water parks have changed through the years. So I've got a short presentation. Uh, I'm going to say I'll, it's going to be very long-winded, but I'll attempt not to do that tonight. Okay. Here's the original park. I'm sure a lot of you people have been there. Uh, what's important in this slide is it shows the design team that we, we originally started with. It was a design-build team and concert partnering with the, uh, town. Uh, it was, it was exciting. Uh, we learned an awful lot. And like I said earlier, we're extremely proud of what we did. And as Jay pointed out, we saw some things we could have done better. Uh, right now, uh, we're presenting, we gathered a team together, we've been working with the town back and forth. 10, 15, maybe 20 years, seeing things deteriorate, what could be better, so forth. Uh, we saw your RFP. Uh, we did not, uh, price the last RFP. Uh, we thought that maybe something could be done better for the town. We, and if something better was going to be done, we would like to get involved. But, uh, we have reached out to the local community. Uh, we're going to select a general contractor named Keller Brothers, who's building a, uh, your middle school, North Middle School. Uh, they're doing a, uh,
Northern. It, it's northern.
Northern.
Gotcha. Uh, they're doing as a CM, uh, at risk. Uh, they're, obviously it's Paddock, uh, we working with a geotechnical engineer that's done work for the, uh, town before. Uh, we have a civil engineer that's involved in Northern Middle School, uh, who's local and will be instrumental if, to make this project successful. Uh, the structural engineers, Watkins Partnership, who was one of the original, uh, structural engineers and was instrumental in the pilings and so forth. Uh, we have an aquatic, uh, to, what we call it, toy manufacturer, Spastacular. Uh, they've been involved in the last three water parks and we've been working with them for over 20 years. Uh, we have an architect that we've done other pool projects with and we have not selected an MEP at this point. Uh, the, uh, our team have worked together multiple times. Uh, Keller Brothers, we've probably done almost a dozen projects with. We happen to be working with them doing the city of Rockville, which is a water park, which opens this, this May. Uh, we've done several other school jobs. And, uh, as all these projects, except for the, uh, city of Rockville, were design-build jobs that we teamed with them. Uh, this is the project that we're doing with them currently, it's the city of Rockville. Uh, it's got, uh, we're working on all the outdoor pools. Uh, we built two new pools inside and putting a lot on outside, excuse me, wrong button. There we go. Uh, there we go. We put these two outdoor pools in, there's a large waterslide complex. We're rebuilding this pool to some degree, all new mechanical, new decks, new landscaping, new. Here's the large waterslide and a multi-level play unit, which possibly could be worked into Chesapeake Bay's new rebuild. Uh, here's some, there's an interesting thing here, a couple of shots of some of the parks maybe you've been to. Uh, I think you've all been to Chesapeake Bay, uh, Chesapeake Beach. Uh, we did Jungle Jim's Water Park in, uh, Rehoboth Beach. It's a fun, fun park. Uh, another design-build job has a master blaster worth checking out. We did, uh, a design-build job for Lake Fairfax, their outdoor municipal water park. One for Geysersburg, we worked at Six Flags and multiple other ones. Uh, uh, the three water parks we just finished, one was in, uh, two of them in West Virginia, one out close to Wheeling, Grandview, uh, which is upper right, Marilla Park, uh, which were just, uh, we finished it last fall, it's opening for the first time this spring. The city of Rockville, we're wrapping up. What's interesting here is all three of these jobs had existing pools that got removed and we put the new pools in. What's the problems is that we saw Jerry, uh, Jay pointed out one or two of them, I think. But uh, mainly what's happening is the pool's leaking. Uh, the pool itself is pretty stable. But uh, we didn't know as much as we know today when we built this one. And the mayor and I talked about things, different finishes, different ways to save money, different ways to spend money. And some of the ways we saved money came back to haunt us. Uh, that's Jay's living through with the broken pipes. The broken pipes are leaking into the mechanical room. It's gassing off, it's trashing all the mechanical, eating all steel. These are things that need to not be repeated. Uh, faux rock support system came out of amusement park industry, usually for a twenty-year life. It's thirty years. It can work, needs to be done differently. Uh, Jay's suggestion is stainless steel, fiberglass, things are not carbon steel. Uh, Jay's slide showed a lot of concrete deterioration. That's only gonna get worse. Pool life, outdoor pools, this area roughly about thirty years. You know, some less. I've seen some indoor pools last longer, but they don't freeze. They're, they're out of UV. There are some settlement concerns here, not necessarily where the pool's sitting, but the decks, the fencing. The ramps up to it, uh, anything else surrounding it needs to be revisited and supported. Uh, the uh. Water features are well past their life expectancy. At the end, last point is, we learned a lot crawling around underneath this pool. Uh, I, my team has good ideas how to make Jay's life and your pocketbook better off. Because not make the same. Change our approach. This is how we suggest going about it. Initially do a structural assessment of the existing filter building. The building itself looks pretty good, but I'm not real sure. So we're gonna have a structural engineer come out and look at it and decide. It has water infiltration problems, as Jay pointed out, water's coming in the building. That's not good. How to fix it? Is it less expensive to fix it or just to put a new one up? Uh, Keller Brothers will play a big part in that. GeoTech will be involved, a structural engineer. We'll get the team out there, we'll look at it, we'll crunch numbers, we'll decide. Uh, we're gonna do some research on doing the decks. Jay pointed out that when they put the highway in, things changed. When you vibrate around here, those, the piles can sink or move and that's bad. Uh, so we have to put a piling system in to support the surrounding infrastructure. That's not gonna be damaged the existing piles. Our concept is to strip the pool part down to the top of the existing foundations. Try to save the building if possible, if it's cheaper. Uh, and build up from there with new materials. The three water parks we're building. When we do design build, uh, we try to ho- hold a pretty high standard. We got an excellent reputation. But then we are held to very tight standards for materials, techniques, placement. Uh, so when we build a contemporary water park, they're better. When Jay pointed out, the grout in the walls, we don't use that technique anymore. We have our concrete tested. We have thicker walls. We do just a darn better job of doing the work. And we're fortunate because we do a lot of design, uh, bid build work. And we're held to high standard for safety, quality, materials. So that's just how we do it because we ha- that's how we have to do it every job. We're not a builder that, you know, occasionally does it. That's, this is what we do every day. Uh, the uh. So we would work the geotechnical engineer, maybe use screw piles to hold the decks up. Wouldn't disturb the existing infrastructure. Uh, there are piping, piping systems that. Uh, are just broken. They're leaving. The drainage pipe coming out from the pool going down to the creek. Uh, it's broken. We try to figure out a way so it won't break. Uh, the uh. I'd mentioned we'd start from the piles up. That's on the assumption that the pile systems are good. Originally, we put it in, had a hundred-year life on the wooden piles. Well, we'll see if that's true. We're gonna, we're suggesting exposing those piles, looking at them, determining if they're. If they are a hundred-year life. And it's gonna be my opinion, it'll be a geotechnical engineer with a professional engineer saying this. It could be a surprise. I think that's unlikely. I look at the structure, the pool's really not moving, but everything else around it is. So that's a good concept to start. The uh. New water parks have different water features. Uh, we would replace the slides with brand-new slides. We'd probably change the toys inside. And the footprint would be pretty much the same because it's driven by the existing foundation and that's where your economy is. Uh, we would do the rock work different. We would reduce the amount of rock work. And we would support the rock work with your fiberglass or stainless steel or structural foam. Uh, we haven't decided because we haven't investigated it yet. The uh, we would collaborate with the town. Uh, they've been using the park, they have ideas, they have wants, they have desires to do certain things. Some of those may not be possible, but some of them might be great ideas. We would. Ideas and see if we can work it in the footprint. Uh, and in the time we're allowed to do it. Uh, this is the slide manufacturer. Again, we're finishing a job right now. We'd love to have the town come out and see our active construction site, bring a hard hat. Uh, a safety vest would be nice. Uh, but we could orchestrate a tour there and you can see that, see it coming out of the ground. And again, it's, there's a lot of ants on that pile of honey right now, getting it done. Okay, uh, how to go about it, get the most for a buck? Jay has local contractors that could do some of the things you don't need us for. When you do a renovation like that, you should make the whole thing new. Everything. You walk in the gate, it's, it's new. It's the thirty, forty-year facility. The bath house probably needs to be gone over. Lose local contractors for that. The snack bar, you know, I, we didn't go inside that, but I'm looking at the deck saying. It's a very functional piece. Is it good? Is it, needs to be rebuilt? Uh, we can do that or you can use local contractors to do it. Keller Brothers is a general contractor, very capable. But again, uh, the less we do, the less we charge and the better for the town. Uh, plus it's, it's good business to involve the surrounding community. I talked about the newer materials. Uh, we do the best shotcrete work of any pool contractor on this part of Eastern Seaboard. And we have an ACA, American Concrete Institute inspector on all our municipal jobs. Making sure that we're doing the job right. And I do that because it makes my guys rise to a higher standard and I have less trouble. And we get recommended. We actually invite the consultant to come out and watch us do it. So that they know that they're, you know, they're dealing with a very reputable outfit. For the un- uninvolved, that's what your park looks like if you sliced it and looked underneath of it. That's what Jay battles with. Uh, those are the pilings, the grade beams. And that gives you kind of an idea where new starts from above there. This is plan view of the park. This shows all the grade beams that he's been fighting in between. And the blue areas are the places that Mayor Gerald Donovan and I decided we would put pavers and actually a sand beach. Instead of putting pilings and concrete. It was a darn good idea for a couple of years. Then it's not as good idea. And now it's a rotten idea. Uh, we would probably put screw piles in that area. Uh, the uh. There's been mentioned to put. Trigger happy here. To put. See if we can sneak. A retaining wall in here and put more deck in. Maybe we will get rid of the handicap ramp, reduce the rock work, get more deck space. Uh, we could change the activity pool a little bit. Maybe redo the beach area, put a spray ground in there instead of a waiting pool. Try to add shade where we can. Use contemporary toys, but basically build a new structure, quality materials. Piping systems that will last and a well-ventilated mechanical system. And get another, a park that will last an easy thirty years. How do we go about it? One of the important things is meet with the Maryland State Health Department. When we built this park, there was nothing like it around here. We bent the rules. It worked great, you know, but. And they studied it and they watched it and we brought them down here to see it operating and it was a springboard for new parks. Well, it's way different from what it is today. Some things have to change. It's not ADA accessible. I mean, it is sorta. We thought it was. This is the first pa- water park that you actually go up a handicap ramp and get on a slide and go in the pool. When we opened it, we had handicap people going down a slide, first time ever. But that handicap ramp doesn't meet ADA regulations for today. The deck slopes don't. We'll address those things. Uh, but we would go through Maryland State, we would assemble a design team, which we currently have. Ninety percent of the team put together. Uh, investigate permit requirements and timelines. Now, we hired a, we, well, we have on our team, we're getting ready to hire. A uh, the local civil engineer that knows the county, is doing Northern Middle School. Is familiar with the regulatory authorities and that will be the most important part. Of trying to do this effort and get it open for next year. I am not gonna tell the mayor or the council that we're gonna get it open next year. But it's possible. And if we can get through a permit, we could do it. And that's what we did last time, about the same amount of time. But the key is getting through site plan approval. Uh, we have in-house design. We can design the pool pretty fast. I'm kinda familiar with it. Uh, and I have some damn good ideas how to make it work and s- and stick, and stay it stuck together. Uh, but that would be a key and I can't predict that. But he's first out of the gate and uh. Uh, to, first thing to do would do some uh. Uh, what we call uh, select demolition. So that the geotech engineer can see what's underneath there. Are the piles actually still good? Knock holes in there. Uh, Jay knows how to do that, but we would do it. We'd get the geotech looking at it. We'd study it, come up with other ways to support it. But the key player would be the civil engineer to see what water quality measures we'd be held to. And how do we solve them? And it could be we trade something, we do something in your parking lot to prove the water quality and they let the water park. Uh, be reconstructed like it was. I don't know. But we would be busy investigating it. Uh, we would, like I say, confirm uh, uh. That the existing foundation is good for one and a half lifetimes. All right, who knows what's gonna be there in forty or fifty years? Maybe it's still be a water park. Who knows? Uh. Three to six weeks after that, we would, I would, I'd be involved doing a conceptual design. We would interface with the town. Uh, and from that, we would build a budget model and try to figure out what it costs. All right, we would tell, we would, hopefully by then the civil engineer knows how, what the permit processing, process would be. And we hopefully give you good news that it could be open by, by next May or June. We can do the construction work, but we have to get the permits. Uh, the civil engineer would also design a uh, erosion control. Uh, drawing. So when we do the demolition, we'd already know what to do and we'd go right in it and start it. Uh, if we know how long it takes to get a permit and we make the budget work for the town. Uh, we could demo it. Permit it and deliver it. But it all depends on that. See, and then we go about the other part. I've already talked to, by email, the state health department. And that, and they sound excited about discussing your job. And we would like to go up there with a representative with the town, meet with them, say this is what we wanna do. Call it a repair. So we can grandfather in some of the si- things that worked and uh. Have confidence of a green light to go ahead. Uh, and that's what we do. Uh, and we would like you guys to work with us and partner with us like we did thirty years ago.
I remember it well.
And my spiel is over.
Let's see if the council members have any question for you. Council, Eric?
Yeah.
I thought you might have a question. Or two.
Well, that's what we're here for, right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for coming.
My pleasure.
Um. So I really only have, well, let me not say that. I might have more than two questions. Um, but let's start with two. Um. So, uh, just one of your last three slides, you said uh, that uh, at that point, you'd be able to come up with a budget model. So I'm assuming that would be, at that point, you'd be able to then provide us with. A um, a budget for the entire scope of the project. Is that, is that correct?
Almost.
Somewhere in the ballpark. I mean, I'm, I'm obviously.
Call it a reasonable order of magnitude. Some portion of the budget would be hard. Some of the por- portions of budget, not quite finished design, don't have enough down input. You know, there'd be some soft parts. Who's fixing the snack bar, you know? What deck finishes, what's the fence gonna be made out of?
Yeah.
There's things.
So from the, from a projection point from today. How, how far into the future are we looking before we can get a budget of the general scope or within, you know, a ten percent?
Uh, I put it up in the slide. I wasn't counting the weeks, but. I'm gonna figure if we can get a green light to do this exploratory work, the demo, the select demolition. Hire the geotech, get the team out there looking at things to make analysis. I figure that's three weeks. All right, and then it would take about another four to six weeks to develop that budget.
Three weeks and then another four to six weeks. Okay.
Yeah, so ba- basically like.
Nine, ten weeks.
Two and a half to three months. Uh, it could go faster. But we always want things to go faster.
Okay, um. And then, um, so what are we, obviously there's some, we're talking about some sunk costs. Um, of exploratory, um, demolition. What are we, what are we talking there as far as what we have to approve expenditure-wise? To get us to the point where then we can create a uh, a budget?
I got one fee proposal before I walked in this room from my, the G, from the civil engineer. I'm still collecting that. Uh, we're anxious to do it for as little as possible, but I can't tell you exactly what it is. Uh, I'd say it's gonna be under, you know, fifty, sixty thousand dollars. That, I would expect it would be less, but I didn't have enough time.
I can appreciate that. Okay, um, so yeah, I'm glad I didn't limit myself to two questions. I actually have at least two more. Initially, when you began, you said that the previous administration, um, put out an RFP and you opted not to submit a proposal. Why was that?
No, a soft spot for your water park. And I thought that they were offering wouldn't work for your community. And it was a run-of-the-mill pool. The amount of money you would spend to get that result, I, we didn't want to get involved.
All right. That's all I've got for now.
Eric, anybody else? Laura?
Uh, yeah, I have a couple of questions. Um, my first one is for you, Mr. Mayor.
Sit down.
Um, so. I'm hearing that we only need sixty thousand dollars ballpark to allow the exploratory work. Is that correct?
Not to exceed that amount, yeah.
Not to exceed? Um, so I guess my question is, why aren't we authorizing that today? Or why isn't that on our agenda today? Because, um, as I mentioned today to Jay, this keeps getting kicked down the road, kicked down the road, kicked down the road. We want somebody to start. And I, I believe that, um, to go anywhere with this, we need the exploratory work done at this point. Is that correct?
I believe so.
And so can you take that out of our capital improvements line item? Or do we need to authorize it?
I'm gonna clarify, because there's two, whether you have money in the budget and whether the contract is authorized are two completely separate questions.
Right. Okay. I guess that would be my first question to you, Mr. Mayor. How do we get this started?
I think that, uh, if a council member made a motion to authorize that amount to be expended, uh, and we got a second and a vote, we could do it.
Okay. I will make that motion, uh, later on this evening.
All right, do we have a second? I thought she did.
I will make the motion to authorize, um, not to exceed sixty thousand dollars for exploratory work on advancing the water park.
If, can we get a second? Then we'll have the discussion. John seconded, okay, discussion, go ahead, Eric.
Well, it's, I'm not opposed to this, but I think that maybe there's more discussion to be had before we, we jump into that, uh, is really all I was gonna say. I think that having, having heard, um, Jay speak and having toured the, the park and, you know, all of us getting involved in this know what's going on. And we are trying to, um, trying to move this forward. We all have that will, I believe. And I believe that this is probably the correct choice. Actually, I have very little doubt that this is the correct, correct directions to go with, with paddock pools and have a GC, um, with Keller and not try to be the GC. I mean, I, I think this is, this is probably the, the way we definitely should go. But I, I, I would like to, and, and I'm not opposed to, um, authorizing something less than, uh, sixty, because obviously we can't do sixty or, or above sixty without an RFP according to the, the charter. So, uh, I just, I just wanted to make sure that we're having the discussion, the multifaceted discussion about not just authorizing, um, the exploratory demolition costs, but also what comes next.
Mr. Mayor? Oh, are you, you've. I have a, I have a question. So, um, thank you for your presentation. I guess, uh, maybe, uh, you could explain to me the life cycle of the water park. We have, it's thirty years old, so we've, we've gone past the life cycle of the report. So I guess, um, of the water park. So I don't understand why we would not just move to have a new water park when we've already exceeded the life cycle of the water park. If, if it's thirty years, we're past thirty years. And why would we put money into something that is already seems to be obsolete?
Parts of it are obsolete, yeah. Parts of it aren't. You are fortunate to have a water park right in the center of town. You're unfortunate to have it on a swamp. It's, it's a rough piece of ground. It was a dredge foil site. And, uh, it was a pretty big challenge for us. But if you want a water park and you have a, want a contemporary water park, that'll be better than one you had before. That would, this could do that. Okay?
What happens after we approve the sixty thousand dollars? You go in and do the exploratory? Is it possible that you could come to the conclusion that you can't repair enough of it to go forth?
The trick would be, we could build another water park there. What we're trying to discover is enough so we can give the most economical price to build a new park. To do that, we're trying to get rid of risk. Risk is to say, we'll do it for a hundred bucks and find out the pilings are no good, and it's gonna cost another fifty bucks. What do we do? That's risk. Contractors avoid risk. And that's what we're trying to do. Avoid steering you wrong, saying we can do this when we can't. So we want to get rid of the unknown and the risk. And a big part of that is the foundation. That's a million-dollar foundation out there, at least. It was. Huh?
Thirty years ago.
Yeah. And I'll admit that we were on new territory when we did it, and we did learn a lot, particularly crawling, me crawling around underneath of it. Could've done this better. But, uh, it's an ideal location. It's popular, it's functional, and it could be a, a, a real jewel for the town. So we'd be interested in being a partner, doing that, to making it even better than it was.
Jay, I believe you have a comment?
I do, please, thank you, Mayor. And Kathleen, I'm just trying to explain. So say you have a house, concrete foundation, two-story tall wooden house. I went in with the approach, we're gonna rip out this wall, change that ceiling, rip up the carpet, new bathrooms, right? Leaving kind of the wood structure. This approach is, we know the concrete foundation is good. Everything else, we're ripping off and putting new. So I think it speaks, we're gonna have another thirty-year life. That was my whole point, and let's do this thing. So he's gonna look and guarantee, Mark, don't make any words in your mouth, that that concrete foundation is good under everything you see, right? We don't know, because that's, but, but the approach is, everything that's questionable is coming out no matter what. And, and the concrete foundation of your house will stay, but everything else is new. I'm just trying to, does that make sense? It's not like we're piecemealing anymore. This will be a new water park.
Well, and I think based on your findings, that where those pilings are underneath the existing structure, it is stable and has been stable for thirty years. So I think that gives us high confidence, not a guarantee, but a high confidence that those pilings are, are sufficient to be used again.
There's another important component to building. Is it cheaper to knock it down and build it, you know, perfect to modern standards? Or is there enough good stuff there that we can make some, you know, remove this and replace it with something else and save money? I don't know that. I have to get this team out there to look at it, and I have to challenge them and ask them. And I gotta take what they say, the consultants. Well, they never pay for anything. They just tell you what to do. I have to go to somebody adds up the money and says, it's cheaper to do it this way. Here's the pluses and minuses, and that's what we would deliver from this report. I would like to save the building because it saves money. It also saves time and also makes the permit process a lot easier.
My, some serious apologies. So what's your name again?
Mark.
Mark, how you doing, Mark?
I'm, I'm outstanding tonight so far.
That's good, it's been pretty good so far. Um, so my, my question basically is, how soon can you get those numbers in from your team?
Get the numbers for the cost of.
Yeah, for, just for that.
Phase one investigation.
Yes. How soon do you think you can?
I'll be developing them tomorrow.
Okay. And then once we get those numbers in, how soon do you think you can get started?
I would mentally, I've already mentally started. But I have to get a green light so I can check with the consultants and see when I can get them out here. What do they need? Where do I have to expose? And launch different things at different times. The geotech looks at the pilings and says, you're good. I'm, I'm ninety percent positive there won't be any issues with that.
Yeah.
But.
But we're just looking at when we can get phase one started, because, uh, like, uh.
I would, it would start, I've already kind of, on a business development basis, you know, we do this for profit, but we also have a heart in it. I've already started that. I already selected a team and said, look, this is a good chance of going forward. So I've got commitments from certain team members. And I said, this is gonna, this have a short fuse. It's gonna go fast, it has to.
Mr. Mayor, since we had a motion and a second, can we move forward or do we have more questions?
If I could have one more.
One more.
One more.
Only one.
I'm rolling out a comment here. Um, all right, so, um. All right, just let me finish my thought there, okay? So I, I, I guess my question is, are we, if we're trying, if, if we as a council here are trying to author, are we trying to authorize a, an execution of a contract? We, we, we don't have a contract.
I think what's happening is you're authorizing a, a talent to negotiate a contract in an amount up to fifty-nine, nine-nine-nine.
Okay.
Um.
It can't be sixty thousand.
But, um.
What's that? Wait.
It, it's a contract of sixty thousand or above as to go out to bed under the charter. So we're talking about fifty-nine, nine-nine-nine, just for the record.
I have to be clear, and there has to be some trust involved here, okay? We're not gonna try to spend any more of that amount of money than it is to get us to that point. Okay?
Right, I'm just clarifying for my council member.
Fifty-nine, nine, ninety-five would be fine.
So what?
And then the question is, because the question is a contract for what? What is the deliverable that you're going to be giving to the town for the forty or fifty or sixty, whatever the number is?
I wrote a narrative, I don't have it with me. But I would take each discipline and say what the result you should expect. The real deliverable, deliverable is what is the budget gonna be? That's what I'm trying to get.
Right, okay, so that was my next question is, like, that, it, does this process end with a, with a budget?
Yes, it does.
Okay. So just for my clarity, what we're voting on is to authorize the mayor to negotiate an exploratory, um, process with paddock that results in a budget to complete the, to complete the project. And has to be less than fifty-nine thousand, fifty-nine, nine-nine-nine. Is that what we're talking about? Because that's not what was stated as the motion. I just wanted to make sure we all understand what we.
That's the intent of my motion.
We need to amend the motion because the motion was for sixty thousand.
Hey, well, let's do it.
I'll make a motion to amend it.
I'll just say the code actually says.
I'll resend my motion, we'll start with a whole new motion.
The code says more than sixty thousand, so your motion would actually still be fine.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so because I was thinking.
Yeah.
Right, at subsection B, which says all expenditures under sixty, so I guess there's a little gap, but.
Okay. Still, we have, we have a. We have a definition of what this contract, what the, what the aim of this contract was, so.
About the gist?
Yeah, I think you articulated it.
Okay.
Well, I mean, my thinking is, we can't move forward without doing this at all. So we might as well do it now.
Yeah, I think Mark actually showed what the scope of the, scope of it is on the slide that described the exploratory work and said, we have to do this to accomplish, yes.
The pilings, condition of the pilings and.
And we would take the time to identify that at a greater detail.
Can we pull it down? Can, can you pull it down in the audience, please, Dan?
So, so, so will you be giving, excuse me? Will you be giving the town a report that will be usable by the town if it determines that a bid is necessary?
That a, that a bid is?
If the town determines that a bid is necessary, because our charter, moving forward after this exploratory contract, the charter says that anything over sixty thousand requires a bid. A, a competitive bid. So although we may all think, yeah, you're the guy, and ninety percent of the chance you are, we would still probably want to follow our charter and put out, put an RFP out, an open RFP out, and then we would decide who to move forward with. And I think that's, that's the point that she's, she's trying to get at.
I'm just asking what you're going.
It's on.
Lights, oh. Oops.
Go ahead.
Excuse me. I'm just asking what the town can expect for the sixty thousand. I just want to clarify that.
You can expect a qualified bid to build a water park for you, okay? I'll be real frank, I've been out here many times. We've never gotten any work other than painting the park one time. But I've come back. At my point in life, I'm not, I don't need any more practice, okay? It's an enormous amount of time for me to develop this. I'm not making any money on not to exceed sixty thousand. We want to partner with the town. We, we would ask that you check us out. We're solid. We partner, we do this frequently. I know charters, I know rules. But for us to get involved, we want to have some assurance that we're, all this work we're gonna do is gonna lead into a construction contract so we can make a, deliver this park with faster probably than anybody else you could, you'd be talking to. That's a bold statement, but we've done it, and we're doing it right now in Rockville. We did it at Marilla Park. We, that's what we do, okay? But we're not in a business of making bid documents, okay? Now, there are vehicles you can do. You can put it out for a competitive bid with what you have, and you've done that. Say, what can we have? It was a design build. We walked away. To do this, to sign it all, somebody can be cheaper than me, I guarantee it. But you won't get what you get from us. Right? We've been your partner for thirty years. There's something.
And, and to be quite honest.
Someone here, probably been married. You know what it's like to have a long-term partner, okay? It's valuable.
But what we're focused, what we need to focus on right now is the next step. And I understand your sentiments, and I worked with you before. So, I mean, we, we go back a long ways, and you're almost as old as I am, I know that.
Almost, I'm trying to catch you.
I hope not, I hope not. Uh, but at any rate, we do, yes.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, so, so I'm, I'm good with the exploratory. Like, we, we can't understand what we want to do until we understand what we're supposed to do, or what we should do. Uh, so I'm good there. I, I would just actually, for Alyssa, just when we look into the next phase of this, when I'm reading the, the town code, uh, that applies to some of this, uh, section seven twenty-three I uh, that applies to some of this, uh, section seven twenty-three I does state nature unusual. Um, and I mean, I'm just intrigued with the wording. I don't know if that's, if there's some, something there. Um, and then also what is the timeline required? Should we have to follow the charter? Uh, you know, respectfully, sir, like you, if we, if we have to follow something, there's some stuff I would like to talk maybe administratively about. So, um, but I, I'm, I'm, I'm good. I think we're talking in circles now.
All right. I'd like to get, all right. I'd like, I'd like to call a question. Uh, all in favor, please raise your hand.
I, uh, should we remake the motion? Cause.
No, it's, it's.
Good.
Sixty.
All right.
I just want to thank Jay for the, the due diligence to get us to this point because.
And Laura, are you an I or no?
I made the motion. I'm an I.
So it's, it's six in favor. Okay, six in favor. The motion passes.
Thank you.
And we, we are looking forward to working with you and again, and, uh, since I'm the only one here that was here when you did this before, uh, we're excited to, to get this moving. This has been a, a big deal for this town to get this restored. And I want to recognize that Jay has been working incredible to get us to this point. And I'm, I'm just glad you're here and thank you all.
And we have some water park committee here too.
That's water park. Who's, who's here for water park committee?
Got.
Great.
Jody and Stu.
I still, over here. Maryland, yes.
That one's done a little bit.
Maryland's done just a little bit. Well, thank you all. Thank you all for your help, uh, to get this moving forward. And, and next time you all have a water park committee meeting, let me know. I'll join you. Just, just to, just to be there.
When you say you'll be working with the town on the, the concept designs?
Yes, sir.
That would be basically the water park committee and whoever.
I'm hoping one person. You can make it two.
Oh, yeah. I can, I can consolidate some ideas, but, and you can tell us if it works or not.
That'd be Samelia.
It would be with me and, um, the public works director.
There's, there's conflicting interests. Time versus imagination.
All right.
Okay. We're gonna try to compress that. And we also have a teeny spot of dirt over there that we can only get so many ideas.
All right.
Well, thank you.
My pleasure.
Welcome aboard again.
Okay. Looking forward to it.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much. And thank you for the presentation. It's very helpful. All right, let's move forward.
Quit taking up oxygen.
It, it, look, it's time well spent and this is just a key, a key thing that this administration is interested in doing. Thank you all. It is time. We're gonna, uh, move forward and the next item on the agenda is the State Highway Administration District Five representatives. If you would come forward, please.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I'm Kimberly Tran with the State Highway Administration, um, the district engineer here at State Highway for our District Five, which, uh, represents for all the state maintained roadways in four counties, which includes Calvert County, obviously, along with Anna Rundle, Charles and Saint Mary's. I have with me this evening Kelly Bullware, who's our community relations manager. And, uh, what, want to thank you all for inviting me to come down and speak a little bit tonight, maybe open up a conversation, answer some questions. Um, as administrator mentioned earlier this evening, and appreciate mayor, the information that you gave regarding the crash that happened last week. Um, when that happened on the morning of April third, and, and as you said, Mr. Vice President, that, you know, emails, Facebook posts, everything start to fly and questions start to get asked, you know? Um, many times when especially involves a child, you know, and not all the details are out yet and, and a lot of people are wondering what happened and all this thing. I want to thank the mayor and the administrator for going out there and being able to observe and really helping everybody to understand the details of, of what occurred and let us, you know, kind of get to the bottom of it relatively quickly. Um, the best part of the news is that it was relatively minor ultimately, and that the child is gonna, you know, hopefully make a full recovery. So that's the most important part. Um, we got involved a little bit early on because there had been requests in the past for things like a crosswalk across Maryland two sixty-one. And I think that's what initially people thought might have happened, that child might have been trying to cross the road to get to school. So, um, thank you for the details that, that you gave that this happened to be, you know, on the town road and it wasn't necessarily crossing. But it, I think, opened the conversation again about some of the pedestrian safety needs in the area. And over the years, you know, I've been in the district now, um, since nineteen ninety-five. My kids would say since the last millennium, right? Um, but, but anyway, over the years, you know, as the areas developed and such, we've had requests in the area, especially as you go a little further south down the hill and the neighborhood that's across from the Brownies Beach. Um, we've had requests along the corridor for things like a crosswalk. Um, in this particular case up at the school, as you mentioned, you know, there is no sidewalk on the east side. And we do have a requirement to have, you know, sidewalk connectivity before we could actually put a crosswalk in. Um, in the area of the school, you know, there are some opportunities, if that's the route that we as a group, you know, maybe get a group together to talk about options. If that's the route that we want to go, ultimately first step would have to be to get some type of sidewalk connectivity. I know you mentioned earlier in the evening about a safe routes to school grant. And so there are those opportunities. Um, those type of opportunities usually though are, in this case, if Calvert County Public Schools would indicate that there should even be walkers to the school. And I know that that, as you, as you guys indicated, that the, right now is not officially walkers at the school. There's bus service on that side. And if that's how, you know, we determine that it should continue, then, you know, maybe a crossing guard or a type of actual school crossing may or may not be what, what is desired, you know? So I think the first step is, you know, I really just wanted to come down and show State Highway support for the situation. Um, the importance of the situation. And I think invite that we do put some type of a team together where we can investigate together along with the sheriff's office, Calvert County Schools, you know, bus transportation or the transportation folks, um, and the town, you, you know, to talk about kind of exactly what do we think are the, the wants and the needs out there and, and then what opportunities do we have to, to move forward? Um, and again, just want to give an opportunity to introduce myself and congratulate all of you. I know there's been turnover in the, in the council and I haven't had a chance to come down here and introduce myself yet. So I guess, um, just want to open it up to any questions or maybe opening up to a discussion.
Well, thank you for making the effort to be here and I truly appreciate that. This is our fifth meeting since we took office.
Yes.
Um, I, I'd appreciate it if you both would leave business cards with me so that I know how to reach you easily. Uh, and, um, and this has been real educational for me. I mean, I mean, I, it's, it's sad that it happened because a child got hit by a car. Uh, but fortunately not hurt badly. Uh, and, uh, but this has just kind of opened my eyes. And I know, Lori, you've got the issue of, of the sidewalk down to Chesapeake Village, um, that's been on the books for a long, long time. And so, uh, that's another thing that, that is alongside the road and that's certainly loaded with problems. And during the previous time that I served, which was, this was probably nearly ten years ago. Governor Hogan came down here and I actually rode in his car with him to show him what we needed to do to get the, uh, get a walkway down to Chesapeake Village. And he agreed to push it, but then, you know, I, I didn't run for reelection and then he turned out and nothing, nothing happened. So, uh, but I'm, well, I won't say nothing happened. Some things happened, but it's still not done yet. So that's a big, important thing that we want to get done.
You're talking about sidewalk on the west side.
On the west side.
All the way down the hill towards Chesapeake Village, right? Yeah.
And that's, that's got, it's, it's got geographical challenges. I mean, there's trees that are right there and stiff, steep cliffs right down to the road. So it's not gonna be an easy thing to do. Um, but it, but, but there's how many homes in there?
I think there's around two hundred. I don't.
About two hundred, about two hundred single family homes in that, in that subdivision that have no way to walk anywhere. And there is the crosswalk right near Brownies Beach, uh, but that doesn't get you to the school, you know, that gets you down there to the walkway. Uh, so it's, it's an issue. I mean, and, and it's, it's also just the given geography of our town. Uh, and there's, I mean, we can't just change it. It is what it is, but we, we need to use our best thoughts and try to figure out a way to, to resolve that problem. So that's important. And, uh, but that and, and, uh, yeah, and, and the whole thing was really educational for Samelia and myself because, uh, uh, we had the, when we first heard about it, we thought that, that child had actually been hit on Route two sixty-one. And, but when we got there and started figuring it out, um, it wasn't that at all, as we've talked before. And, uh, there, there is no real crossing from Fourteenth Street over to the others, to the west side of the road. I mean, there's a ditch as soon as you get to the other side of the road. And so, uh, I mean, and it's pretty steep too. You wouldn't want to walk through it. But anyway, it's, uh, but I appreciate your being here and I, I'd open it up for the council.
Yeah. I, I just had a quick, what would be the process if we want to look at maybe like a speed table of some sort there? And, and the reason I say is like, I, I'm thinking like even with the new school, when you pull out, if you're going left, you're crossing the traffic. There's not the greatest view and then you are coming down a hill. So, you know, there's plenty of times you see cars like try to whip out, uh, to try and beat traffic, but.
So at Old Bayside, which is where that, I guess the bus loop, they go in that, that particular, I think the other one that's closer to Fourteenth Street might be where the teachers are parking in that parking lot or something on the north side of the school. But Old Bayside, um, we, so we do have an established school zone. And so it's thirty miles per hour through there and the school zone has like a pedestal pole with flashers. We call that a hazard identification beacon, right? At H I B. So it's basically a school flasher and it says fines are doubled when flashing. So it's already thirty miles per hour there. Um, and it says photo enforced. I don't know if that is actively has a speed camera. So there is legislation that allows a, a speed camera within school zones. So, so we already have that. Um, I don't have an updated speed study yet out there. We can work on that and see what are the speeds.
Be helpful.
And different times of the day, right? So when it's flashing, are they complying with the thirty? When it's not flashing, do the speeds go up? You know, hopefully the flasher is drawing attention and that makes people comply to it more. Um.
If they slow down from sixty to fifty.
Right. And then as you go down the hill, it goes back to, to forty, which means they go back. Yeah, I know. It's, it's tough, you know? And we've tried, you know, someone had the solution to our speed problem, you know, somebody would be really solving a big problem because the motorists, you know, our roads are designed for the reasonable motorists to be able to see what the conflicts potentially are and then adjust their speed appropriately. A lot of folks are on autopilot. Frankly, they're trying to get from point A to point B and maybe not noticing what all the conflicts around them are, you know? Um, the school zone signing and all of that is meant to bring the public's attention to, hey, we really mean it here. You need to slow down. There could be activity here that is dangerous if you're going too fast. So anything we can do to help the, we would work with Calvert County Sheriff's Office to see, you know, what do they think? They would be the ones operating the, uh, I believe, unless it's local police jurisdiction, um, operating the speed camera. And they can tell us what, how that's going as far as citations, things like that. And then our district traffic engineers can do a speed study and see where, where we are with, um, speed compliance. There are some things that can be done though. I know you mentioned rumble strips and things like that. We do have to be careful with rumble strips in a residential area. A lot of folks, you know, at night it's loud. So homes that are right up along the road, a lot of times they don't like to have rumble strips right in their area. Just to the north in the Harrington Harbor area where we've put those, um, we had a lot of complaints and we had to change those rumble strips so they actually don't rumble. They're sort of just visual. So they're less effective, but, um, the residents do, it, it is, it does affect them at night when they're constantly hearing cars go over those. So we, we have to think about that. But there are some things that, that can be done from a speed standpoint. Um, I think if we got a team together and took a look at it, and like I said, we would want to communicate with the sheriff's office and see what they think about en- enforcement. Um, but the good news is you already, you know, it's an elementary school. So there already is a school zone established and I see the signs out there photo enforced. So if there's an active, um, school zone camera, that's probably helping to reduce the speeds a little bit. Um, don't remember, I tried to mentally remember. One of you were talking about walking one or two dogs and crossing the road frequently. Right? Um, and so that's the other thing. If we ever move forward with, um, an actual school crossing, I don't know that Calvert County Public Schools wants it to be an established school crossing. I'm not sure that they really have walkers to, to any of the schools. But when there's an established school crossing, say fast forward, we get sidewalk or something and there's a crosswalk. S, s, a school crossing, you know, I think to the average motorist tells them, wow, you know, when school's in session, I better look out because crossing guard might be stopping me to let kids cross. But on a Saturday afternoon in July, they don't expect anybody necessarily to be crossing the road. So a general pedestrian crossing, the signs are slightly different, right? But a general pedestrian crossing, like there could be people crossing here anytime. And a lot of times frankly, when there's elementary school playground, maybe the kids want to go over there and play on the playground later in the afternoon or on the weekends or something. So, um, there's, there's, there's different things we have to take a look at.
On Calvert, I know, um, off of, we have a, several schools and usually when it's, uh, when you drive by them, they say if they're flashing, then you have to, but then I've seen it, I know in front of beach, if you, if you drive eleven miles over the speed limit, forty-one, you're gonna get a, a citation for sure. Um, I just know that. Um, anyway, but, um, but yeah, I, I think if there's, um, some, you know, and I, I understand, um, your point about, um, the crossing and then what happens when it's not in school, because it, it does need to be year round. I know that other, uh, sites in, uh, Calvert, that when school's not in session, it doesn't apply. Now, I said, I know some do, but you know, the pe- people, motorists pick up speed. And when you're crossing at Old Bayside, you know, they're flying.
Yeah.
Uh, and then they immediately slow down when they get in front of beach, cause they know they're gonna get a, a ticket. But, you know, you can absolutely, um, they, they don't necessarily, until they get to that point, they, they're coming like gangbusters.
At Old Bayside, um, so we, we did an evaluation last year because of the quest, request for a crosswalk at Old Bayside. And the part of the results was that there's no sidewalk yet, so we can't. But as part of the study, they were looking at things like sight distance. And coming out of, um, I should say, driving along two sixty-one, we look at things that we call stopping sight distance. In other words, if something came out into the road in front of me, do I have enough sight distance to see it? Realize what it is, make a decision, apply the brakes and stop before I hit it. That's stopping sight distance. And in the northbound direction, because there's a little bit of a crest of, of a curve there, um, for thirty miles per hour, you need about two hundred feet. And the stopping sight distance is less than that. So it doesn't quite meet the stopping sight distance. So we would have had hesitation to put a crosswalk there without some other type of control. Like, in other words, just marking a crosswalk is what we call an, an uncontrolled crosswalk. Without having the proper stopping sight distance, we wouldn't be comfortable with that. So, you know, then we're looking at, well, what type of control would it be? Some type of pedestrian signal? There's, there's different types of things, you know? If it's mid-block, it can be something called a hawk signal versus an actual traffic signal for the intersection. Um, we didn't get as far as to actually look to see if it met justification for a traffic signal yet from a traffic volume standpoint. Because step one was, well, we don't have sidewalk yet. Um, so we haven't gotten that far along in, in studies. And that's why then we realized, well, there are no walkers and Calvert County doesn't really have walkers. So we didn't go that far yet. Until now, we're starting to hear that there's other requests other than a established school crossing, because there's other folks crossing the road and they just, from a pedestrian safety standpoint. Um, one thing I do want to say about unmarked crosswalks, um, I get on my soapbox a little bit about this sometimes. So Maryland vehicle law in the state of Maryland, maybe many states are the same, but in Maryland, when state highway, when somebody marks a crosswalk on the road, it establishes this law in Maryland that says, if somebody steps into the crosswalk, the traffic has to stop for you. Now that all sounds great because you said, nobody stops for me, right? If I put the crosswalk and I step in it, they have to stop for me. But the, the problem is, and just follow with me for a second, when there's something, so we have what we call the boulevard rule, right? You're driving down the road and someone's trying to get out of the gas station, onto the highway. What do you do? You look for a gap in traffic and when there's a gap, you go. And you try to pull out so that the people on the highway don't have to slam on their brakes or they're all gonna blow their horn at you, right? Like you look for an appropriate gap and you go. So the boulevard rule means that the highway, the roadway always has the right of way. And folks entering have to yield the right of way. Um, except if we alternate the right of way by means of a traffic signal. So the, when you put in a traffic signal, what that means is the boulevard rule no longer applies. The traffic signal is gonna say, you have the right of way. And now the side street has the right of way. And now the main line has the right of way. There's a lot of science that goes in, into how long should the yellow be? How long should we have an all red phase? And it all has to do with. And it all has to do with drivers are on autopilot. They know that the boulevard rule applies. And now all of a sudden I've thrown a yellow light in front of them and now they have to make a decision. And y'all know what that decision is, right? Do I slow down or speed up and go through it? So you've created this now dilemma for the driver, like they, you have to get their attention. And now I have to make a decision. Do I have enough time and space to stop before the intersection when it goes red? There's, there's science behind that. Is it downhill? Let's take them longer to slow down and stop. How wide is the intersection that they have to get across? You know, how many lanes do they have to get across? All of that goes into the time and space that's needed for that yellow light. And then probably to have all the phases red for some more buffer. When you put a crosswalk on the road, that's, doesn't have any signal or anything attached to it, an unmarked crosswalk. You have now changed the boulevard rule to say the pedestrian now automatically gets the right of way when they step into the road. And whichever that pedestrian is, whether that's a 10-year-old girl or an experienced driver, they, they don't know that they're making this decision, but they are now making the decision. Does that approaching highway driver have enough time and space to stop? He no longer has a yellow time or an all red or any of that. You just have a person stepping out in the street. So, uh, you know, in general, I'll say as a traffic engineer, I'm not really comfortable with unmarked, with uncontrolled crosswalks. And giving that responsibility. Now, the child who's never driven, they sort of can understand. If there's a gap, do I have enough room to run across the road and make it? But they have no idea how long does it take this heavy SUV coming downhill in the rain to stop for me? So we have to think about that.
Good thoughts.
So, um, I was on the Walkable Community Advisory Group as a volunteer years ago. So I've, I've kind of heard this and, and we've gone around about, you know, these various different dilemmas. I would be very interested in meeting with you and just getting them all kind of laid out on paper. What can be done? What can't be done? What is advisable? What's not advisable? And just getting a whole picture, because I'm getting ready to stand up the committee, you know, as a council person. So I want to understand it for a couple, A, to solve the problems, to see what can be done. And B, to be able to communicate, um, accurately, everything that you just went over. So, um, thank you for bringing S H A here. Um, if you could save a card for me, I'd love to contact you. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions, Eric?
Yeah, I do. Um, so, you know, everything, everything that you've been talking about here, um, and it's extensive and can I'm sure have an effect on traffic patterns and, and tendencies of drivers. But they're all retroactively enforced.
I understand.
So, I mean, I've always been a, a proponent of speed humps. And there's been no mention of that. What's your take on something like that in a situation particularly, I mean, that seems like the perfect place for a speed hump to me. Why not get everybody to almost come to a stop in a school zone as congested as that with so much going on? And with the visibility of the, of the, of the Horizon event there and, and the community across from the school. Like what, what is the apprehension about a speed bump or to speed hump, speed table, whatever you call it in that area?
So speed humps and speed bumps, if, if we know what those are, right? Those two specific things are not permitted on a state roadway. Even on most county roadways where you see them, they have certain classifications of roads that they can put them on and others that they can't. Because of, um, you know, response times for emergency vehicles and things like that. There's certain classifications of roadways where we just don't put speed humps. And so our state highways fall into that category. I understand that speed tables are something that we're starting to, uh, utilize on the state highways. And I, I'll be frank, I, I'm not, I don't have much experience with that in our district yet. I do understand that some of those are going in, maybe in like Montgomery County and Prince George's County. So that is something that we could probably, um, you know, investigate and see what, what the criteria would be and whether this would be a, a candidate for something like that. There's been a lot more focus, um, thankfully i- in recent years on pedestrian safety and a lot of treatments for traffic calming and things like that. And a lot of the, um, innovation, if you want to call it that, is happening, you know, in our District Three, PG and Montgomery County. So we, we can look and see what type of opportunities there are. I think that would be part of, you know, as we study this a little further and see what opportunities there are. Certainly, like you said, from a traffic calming standpoint. Yeah.
All right. Well, thank you very much for coming tonight and, and, uh, and filling us in. I appreciate that and we look forward to working closely with you in the future. I did have one more question. The lights at Richfield Station.
Yes.
Okay.
I spoke to Councilman about that earlier.
Yeah, what, you didn't mention that earlier, did you?
No, I'm sorry. For the again, sorry, I apologize.
And I, I, I was supposed to meet, uh, the engineer out there this morning. I was there at about six o'clock and he never showed up.
Okay.
And so I wasn't real happy about that, but, uh, it turns out he got there, I guess about 7:30, but I had already left. Um, but, um.
So I understand there was a couple of different maybe, um, issues with, with the signal. And I got a, an update from him before I came to the meeting tonight. So what I understand, not have much time to really understand all the details. And I drove through it a few times on the way here today, just to kind of sit through the different phases. One concern, I believe, don't put words in my mouth, but I think one concern was just how long the cycles are, right? And, uh, especially the folks coming out of Richfield Station, and there's so many of them, and how long they have to wait, particularly on the off-hours. Could the signal potentially maybe go on flash at night and things like that? So I remember when we installed that signal, um, part of the issue that was out there was the sight distance coming out of Richfield Station. And the sight distance involved, you know, trying to find a gap to get out. And we had, had requests in the past to have that flash at night. And the, the authority to make that change doesn't really lie with me. It lies with our central officer of traffic and safety. So in investigating that and the criteria that would go into us making a request for them to make that change, it doesn't really meet the criteria from a sight distance standpoint for us to be comfortable with letting it flash in the middle of the night. Because one of the whole purposes of that light was to solve a sight distance issue. So what we did was we put detection in that hopefully would have made the signal what we call pretty snappy. And it's not very snappy apparently. So that's the other complaint. It's just how long the cycle is. And when there's not much traffic, you're still wading through all these cycles.
That detection is on the road going down to 260?
I believe that there should be detection, looking at each side street and then also looking at the main line left turn bays.
The, the cameras at the top, right?
Yeah.
That look down?
Look down at you. Yeah, they're up on like.
Actually, Benga said they found the issue at night where it was.
Yes, given a false call. So at night, just by having one of the signals change from red to green, the other one was picking up that glare and thinking that there was a car, our car sitting somewhere else and activating a whole nother phase where there was no car. So my understanding was that they, uh, our signal shop, which is up near the airport, they're trying to update the detection to solve that problem. I'm not sure actually whether it's been solved or they just identified that that's the problem to solve.
It was, uh, when I was there this morning, um, it appeared to me that cars coming down to the light, that it triggered fairly quickly.
Okay.
Uh, to allow them to cross and, and, and make the left because everybody was going left toward the city. Uh, that part seemed to be working okay this morning.
Yeah, but I was on, so I was going into Virginia this morning about 5:30 or 5:45. And I'm, I'm pretty sure I sat at the light for about 19 minutes, waiting for the, for the light to turn green, uh, with nobody around. So.
Coming out of Richfield Station?
Going, uh.
No, on 260. On 260.
Oh, on the main line, just sitting there.
Sitting there. Yeah, you'll, you'll sit there and there'll be nobody in any direction. You're just sitting there waiting.
I think that has to do with waiting through every phase to be served, whether there's anybody there or not. We checked all the detection. The other situation I know that, um, Councilman Reinhardt mentioned to me was going westbound. But like instead of going to DC, if you were trying to turn into Richfield Station, so westbound, you're making a, you're waiting at the red. And you finally get the green and I can turn left into the median. And now I sit another red before I finally get the green to continue on. So that, that's something I'll take, we can take a look at and see, do they? I know that there's some complication with trying to get a phase to, to clear and not have people stuck in the middle. So that actually surprises me when you, when you told me about that this evening. So we're going to look into that and see what's going on with that. I did that today because as I drove each phase, I'm like, wow, gotta wait to, gotta wait for two lights. So I understand.
Yeah. The people that are lucky are the ones that live on Limerick Lane. It's, you know, lickety-split there and you can make a right turn on red to go to the city and no problem. Well, thank you for being here. And again, if you would leave a business card, I'd appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. Let's move on. Uh, resolutions and ordinances. We're going to introduce ordinance, um, O dash 25 dash Ford ordinance of the mayor of Town Council Chesapeake Beach, Maryland, amending the town code, chapter 290, 290 zoning article seven, planning commission and board of appeals, section 290 dash 32, board of appeals to move text relating to a certain restriction on the grant of a variance in the critical area from subsection, subsection F5 to subsection F4. And we'll set a public hearing, uh, for the next town meeting, which I believe is May 15th. And we'll set that for, uh, are we going to start the meeting at 6:30? That's the plan? All right. We'll set the public hearing for 6:15 PM. And we'll introduce ordinance O dash 25 dash five and ordinance of the Town Council Chesapeake Beach, Maryland, amending the town code, chapter 290 zoning article five dimensional requirements, section 290 dash 19 tables requirements, exceptions, 290 dash 19 F to provide certain exceptions to setbacks and lock coverage requirements for certain single family homes. And that will just follow on immediately after the previous, uh, hearing. Next, uh, we have reports of officers, boards and commissions, planning and zoning commission. Anybody here to give that report? Nobody here to give that report?
No, I don't think anybody's here. I did want to make a comment real quick because I, I was looking at the draft language for the signs. Uh, so I'll, I'll be the one that says it, uh, is very, very technical. Um, so it might be a little challenging for just layman's folks to, to read it. But when I did read it, there seems extremely prescriptive, uh, on what, uh, can't be allowed. And, and I'm, I'm intrigued to see what the, uh, planning and zoning commission comes back with the final one, like can't have the wavy guy. So basically, uh, skills barber shops, all their, uh, all their signs got to go away. Uh, the A sign, you can only have one in a business. So, you know, I started thinking, can Rollins not have one at each entrance if they were to decide to do that? But I'm not a sign expert. It just seems very prescriptive and technical.
Thank you. Board of Appeals, uh, case, uh, number 23, 2023 dash 03 Roden Reel, Inc., Donovan Estates LLC has concluded. Is there anything else to be said about that?
Got Jody here.
Is there anything that you want to add? And, and I agree, that absolutely needs to be done with that missing a meeting provision. Yes. And thank you for your service on that commission. That was a long and arduous, uh, hearing. Chesapeake Beach Oyster Cultivation Society, uh, Chair Alexander submitted the written report. You all have the written report in your packet. Uh, Green Team. I think somebody's here from the Green Team, huh?
I am.
You've got a written report.
Yeah, the only clarification I want on the, uh, and I don't see my report right now. I had it a minute ago. Okay. The only clarification I wanted to make is the, uh, Arbor Day is going to be celebrated April 25th. And that's going to be the nature walk at 5:00 PM at Bayfront Park. There was going to be a cleanup on, um, April 26th, but that has been canceled because of, uh, other competing activities. And so they are going to postpone the cleanup, well, they'll just hold the cleanup in October. So that's my only correction to the, uh, report.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item. Next item is the Twin Beach Community Health Coalition. Did I skip that? Oh, I'm sorry. Kellum's revitalization.
Yeah, for Kellum's, um, we, we haven't had a meeting. I mean, we've only had a few weeks since the last meeting. But, uh, plan right now is just to have an engagement with Jay, um, probably towards, uh, middle end of, yes. Uh, Jay's got my drawing, my, my conceptual design, but, um, probably, uh, like in the mid, next week or something, I'm going to be out, uh, for spring break for the next two days though.
Two, two-word comment here. Pickleball courts.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Everybody wants them.
I do, I actually do, I actually submit, that's a good point. Uh, maybe we can engage the county to see if they would be able to like share some of their information with the Dunkirk Park, uh, pickleball courts that were just installed to see like costs or like who they went with and all that other stuff.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, when we had our construction, uh, meeting, alignment meeting, uh, Bob Brandon with Parks and Recs was here and he used, he referenced Dunkirk Park a lot.
Okay.
Navigating what we should do with.
Okay. Would we be able to ask him for?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, Twin Beach Community Health Coalition.
Uh, we did not have a meeting yet this month, but we are working on our branding and marketing. We have a couple of logos in that we're talking about. And then we're also about to start planning the, uh, August event for the opioid awareness. Where we think we want to bring it to Chesapeake Beach and do something a little different this year. So we're putting the work in on that now.
Thank you for that. All right. The Walkability Committee.
Um, we are, we have not stood up yet. I'm still doing legwork. Um, I've been researching with, um, companies, local companies about, um, what next steps would be for trail systems, um, land management, things like that. And I have been reaching back to some of the old projects that were, um, taken up by some of the Walkable Community Advisory Group committee members and, um, learning about those and, um, seeing which ones of those projects could be potentially moved forward. And I plan to make calls to everybody that volunteered in April and, um, start standing up the committee, um, May or early June.
Waterpark Committee.
Uh, yeah. Thanks. Thanks for hosting the eighth, uh, tour over there. I know you, you've done it quite a bit now. Now, I think it was very informative and helpful for the committee to see all that. And we look forward to, uh, working together in the future.
Great. Thank you. Does anybody have any unfinished business to bring before the council? During non-new business. Let's see. First item, Town Council to consider the reappointment of Jody Hoon, start of the Board of Appeals for a three-year term. You have a motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Appreciate all your hard work. The Town Council to consider the reappointment of Peter Foiler to the Ethics Commission for a three-year term. He's not here tonight, but I've spoken to him. He's, uh, willing to continue to serve. Is there a motion for approval?
Take a motion to approve.
Is there a second? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Town Council to approve payment of the received pressure reduction valve. Jay?
Sure. Um, this, just for clarification, what it is, Richfield Station of, uh, one of our three water towers is built at a higher elevation than our other two. So there's what's called a pressure reduction valve. So we don't overflow or overpressure, um, the rest of town. It works both ways. Uh, so it's kind of unique. If that Richford Tower were to go offline, which it has, that valve will actually let these other towers feed it. We've rebuilt it since, uh, 2006, when I started three times. Last year it was done. We bought a new one. It was budgeted. It's still under budget. Uh, and I, I understand, uh, Brittany, when she was a treasurer, I think she was looking at that, the reason why it didn't get approved then when she was here as like a capital item, right? Um, because we. The reason why it didn't get approved then when she was here as like a capital item, right? Because we purchased a. Thirteen thousand dollar thing. I assumed it was a maintenance item because we're replacing part of the infrastructure. So that was the hiccup and the delay. This, this, just for clarity, has been bought and it's been in place for five months. So we already bought it. I guess it's just a matter of, I wanted to be clear that it was within budget. It's part of the existing infrastructure, but we just do the amount. It's in front of the council and mayor. So I don't know if it's an approval we vote on or it's an awareness thing. That I don't know.
Well. Why don't we just have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
There a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Mission accomplished.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. All right. Next, we have town council to purchase, consider the purchase of an HVAC system for the water reclamation treatment plant. Josh?
Yeah, this is a. Split unit for our denitrification building control room. The existing unit that's in there was replaced. In two thousand and twenty-one, which was only five years after the original one was put in when the E and R project was done. At the time, the unit was replaced. There was a lot of corrosion on the fan coils. Here we are, four years later, we're looking at replacement. They're seeing the exact same thing. They saw extensive corrosion on the coils. A E E V valve had failed and they're recommending the, a. Higher quality corrosion resistant unit to replace what's in there. The cost that they're providing is ten thousand seven hundred and ten. This is from Alliance Trade Services. Alliance Trade Services is our current contractor for. HVA service and repairs. So that this was something they looked at and identified with their seasonal inspection. Back in August of two thousand and twenty-four. This item would come out of the capital projects line item for equipment purchases. We do have sufficient funding in the line item for that, for this purchase.
How long will this one last?
Ideally, this one will last quite a lot longer. It's, it's designed for corrosive environments. It's. Used in coastal facilities, houses due to salt corrosion. The only thing I can think of the reason why this one's seeing corrosion is possibly the way the exhaust system is built for the building. The exhaust intake for the adjacent pipe gallery. Is on top of the denitrification filter building, which is right adjacent to the filters. And I can only assume maybe moisture or something from the clear well or from the filters is being drawn in and causing additional corrosion on copper inside that building.
But the ones we had before were not anti-corrosion. So they were just a step up.
This is, that's correct. That's why it's a little more expensive.
And I'm noticing it's, it looks like a new type of refrigerant, the four fifty-four Bravo, R four fifty-four Bravo. Or the, at the bottom of the.
Yes.
So. I don't see anything on here about flushing the old or replacing the line set. It said connect to the existing line set. So with that, when they're using new refrigerant, they'll have to flush the old refrigerant out.
I would assume that they would do that also. They in here, they recover, item two, recover all refrigerants from the existing HVAC system and dispose of them. To EPA standards. And then I know they had in here how installation will all need copper refrigerant piping and fittings needed to connect to the existing line set.
Yeah. So they're using the existing line set is, is what I'm getting at. I just want to make sure when they get on site that they. Flush it and make sure they do everything they gotta do.
I, I can make sure that they do that. I, I have confidence in their work that they're going to do out there.
Okay.
This, this item is budgeted. But it's above the spending, my spending authority. So that's why it's brought to you for approval. And so is there a motion for approval?
Motion for approval.
Is it? I thought we increased your.
Submit over.
Doesn't go into effect until May.
Got it.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. The last item here. Excuse me. A water quality study. Kathleen, you're going to take that?
Yes, it was brought to my attention by one of my neighbors that there was an environmental work group study done. And this, the article, everybody had it in their package, February twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five. And the article basically said that the chemicals were found in the Maryland drinking water. So I just want to say I've looked into it. There are chemicals in, in the water, but it doesn't necessarily mean they're harmful. As of two thousand and twenty-three. Maryland determined that they were safe. Right now, the, the issue, the PFAS, which. Polyfluoroecolol, forgive my pronunciation, they are called forever chemicals and they are. Basically manmade substances and there's about four thousand of them in our water. They're in clothing, they're firefighting foam rugs. But they're very resistant to break down and they accumulate in our bodies and environment. I know that that's been of importance to certainly us in Calvert County. There's a restoration advisory board. Meeting that's held at the Naval Research Lab and they're. That's coming up on, I believe it's April twenty-third. And they will also give a site in update on PFAS as well as you can speak to. Question and answers you might want to ask, but right now in the state of Maryland, one point three percent of. These chemicals are in our drinking water. And lastly, I just want to say nationally, our, the new administration, they're cutting back a great deal on water regulations and. And requiring less regulations to keep for our water. They're allowing higher number of PFAS in the water. So. And lastly, I just want to say that. The University of Maryland Extension, they have a monthly webinar that's done in April. And I was trying to think of. You know, what we should do immediately here in Calvert. And I think one of the first things we might do. Is making sure that you can listen to the University of Maryland. They have the monthly webinars and. The one coming up in April is on good drinking water quality. But there's also safeguards, I think, that we can take before we actually. Do something like change all the water, you know, make everybody, make sure. Everybody's on public water if they're not. And one of these, and I thought it would be a great project is. Signs along the, our sewer drains that say no, put a stencil that say no dumping. And dump, no waste drain as it drains to the bay. And that might be a great project just to. Make more public awareness about our drinking water. Make sure that people are disposing their chemicals properly, the motor oil, that they're taking it to a recycle center. That the fertilizers and pesticides, we try to, you know, don't overuse them on our, on our lawns. Pick up after our pets. I know Chesapeake Beach is very good along the boardwalk. They. All have the poo bags and they're, they're fastidious about replacing them. I mean, I've called and they're like boom. Within the next day. So I think that's important. And then lastly, certainly there's. Save the Bay that protects all our waterways in, in state. So. I just wanted to respond to my neighbor who was concerned and wanted to know what we were doing. So I think for right now. Those would be some. I guess opportunities that people could take in regards to water quality.
Well, thank you for sharing that information. Appreciate it. And Jay, I believe you wanted to add something?
Yeah, just, just because, just for two things. She is correct, the statewide study. And I just sat through, like I talked about PowerPoints. I sat through thirty-two hours of them last week. Part of my licensure, but specifically every class on PFAS. So just for clarification. The town was ahead of it, proactively tested all three of our raw water at the well. We get groundwater, no PFAS. Then the state mandated two years ago, we start testing every year. Now currently it's every six months. We just took that test. So for, just for clarification. Our water here in Chesapeake Beach that comes out of the Quay Aquifer does not have PFAS. All water that comes out of reservoir water does have PFAS. But, but the end of it all. They, they're going to send me a video. It's, it's forty minutes, but I want it linked to our website. It describes the whole phenomenon. She's exactly right. And let me tell you, legislation's coming our way where our treatment plant might have to eradicate this and different things. I sat through classes, I'm ahead of it, but I want to share this PowerPoint. But, but the bottom line is for the public. Right now, as of today, state mandatory testing for PFAS is zero. The town has zero detects. That's parts per trillion, right? Zero detects. So. We're in good shape now. Not saying the future doesn't change. I just wanted to put that out there. That's all.
Thank you, Jay.
I think we got forty minutes for a PowerPoint.
You can watch that at your own leisure. I won't bring it here.
This is, that's the last item on the agenda. Is there anybody that wants to make a public comment? Anybody in the, in the public that wants to? Stuart, come up. Former councilman Stuart Comebo.
All right.
Former M M L, former M M L president Stuart Comebo.
Thank you, thank you. I didn't come to talk trash before the council came to talk a little splash, try to advocate for the water park. As you know, I've served nineteen years on the council and served the President of Maryland Municipal League as well as Southern Maryland Municipal Association. But I also chaired the water park committee. And we formed that committee some years ago. Bruce was here. LeBron Hart, the later part was here. But we did this because we knew the water park was, was declining and needed a lot of maintenance. And we also thought we needed some new. Rides and different things to, to upgrade the water park. But it was very difficult at that time because we had an administration that really didn't want to put money in the water park. I don't think they wanted the water park. So it was difficult. We had to fight for everything we could do to improve the water park. I had a statement I was going to read. It was very brief, but it was very late in the evening. So I'm not going to read my little statement. It was only about three, two. Minutes or so, but there's some things I wanted to highlight for your consideration because what's most important for the council is that you have to be on board. This is something you want to do. You all have to be on board. You know, it's an amenity to the community. Some folks want a swimming pool. We have a swimming pool down in Prince Frederick. Some would like to have an enclosed pool. All that would be very nice. But the water park was for the kids and for the community. And there were many municipalities that are very envious of a town like ours, as small as we are, they have an amenity like this for, for folks in the community. But it's been very beneficial, not only to Chesapeake Beach, but the county as a whole. We had a economic study done. And just wanted to share a little bit with you on that. Was done by. Get a gentleman's name. It was done in two thousand and twelve. And the town commissioned an economic impact study through the beacon led by Dr. Mimo Dreyker. At the Franklin P Purdue School of Business at Salisbury University. And the report found the Chesapeake Beach Water Park generated an annual economic impact of over four million dollars. And supported over a hundred and seventy jobs across Calvert County. That's significant. There are five things I wanted to also share with you. That this water park does to our community and to the county. Again, because I'm not reading the statement, I'm just going to pull a little few things from. That I wanted to share. Let's consider the five key factors that the water park does for us. Local employment. The park generates seasonal jobs, particularly for young people, offering valuable work experience. Marketing, where the merchandise we sell, the food stand, food services. Safety of the lifeguards. And we not only had excellent lifeguard, but we had award winning lifeguards at the water park. Number two, tourism and admissions. Visitors, visitors travel from across the region specifically to visit our town and our water park. Food and gasoline sales, families ate at local restaurants and filter tanks for gas here in town. Retail spending. Guests often stopped at our shops and supported our local businesses. And our local businesses need this. And the fifth is the town revenue. The park helps support public services through some of his operational projects. Now. The gentleman from the pool service, he's right. The park is over thirty years old and that erosion has accelerated because we're in a very moist sand, not sand, but salt area. So it, it, it's served its time. And I very much support the idea of stripping it all down and building a new water park. Now, yes, it's going to cost the town some money. It may cost you billions of dollars to do this. And certainly Bruce can shepherd you through the loans or bonds and things that would need it to, to do this. But it's not going to be a loss to the town. You know, we have lines that get into the water park. It's not a. Marketing issue where are we going to be successful in what we do? We know we're going to bring people in. In fact. I've had an opportunity to tour the new Rod and Reel and it's phenomenal what they've done over there. I don't know if you had a chance to see that yet, but if you haven't, you're going to be shocked. On the work that they've done there. But the additional rooms from that same study. There are numbers of people who will come down and stay at that hotel complex specifically to come to the water park. And with the added rooms, that's added admissions that we're going to have and we need to be prepared for that. So not only the structural issues that we need to look at, we need to consider how we're going to manage the people that are going to be attending the park. Because I'm sure we're going to have greater numbers than we've had in the past, particularly having a new water park. So we need to think about how we're going to accommodate loungers and so forth to get people in board. But my point is that if you're going to do this, then do this. Do it right. Invest in it appropriately. And come out with something you're going to be very proud of. It's one thing that I can tell you in nineteen years, I can look back on the number of things that I've been a part of. The chairman of the renovation here in town hall, many, many things I can look back on. This is something you will be able to look back on. That you've accomplished. It's been a real benefit and service to the town and to the community. So I hope that you support it. I hope you will. Whatever money is involved to do this, do it and please do it right. Because now you'll have an investment in another thirty years. Of another amenity and service within the town of Chesapeake Beach. Because government is not about, it's not a business. So it's not about how much money you can put into the bank. It's about amenities and services to the town. And that's how you should be looking at yourselves as you govern as councilman in Chesapeake Beach. But congratulations to you all. Hope you all the best. And I really hope that you will support the water park.
Well, thank you, Stu. I think, I think this council's right on board. So your message as well is heard. And thank you very much. Appreciate you being here, Stu.
Dan?
Dan?
Good evening, sir.
Man.
Good evening. A little late. So I think, you know, as I come up this morning or. Feels like this morning, came up earlier, there's different things that we talk about that are. Better talked about in the open. And there's different things that are handled behind the scenes. One of the things that. A lot of people don't see is the things that are handled behind the scenes. And I'd like to thank some, you know, we've, we've come a long way. And there's a lot of work and everything that we're putting in. And there's some of this hard as a, as a resident and council. Not everything's fun. But one thing that we can have fun, and when we have that opportunity, I think we should take in and look and. See where we're going. So we're all going to the same thing. I know that you guys have only been here for a little bit. There's been a lot of different things that have come in and happened. Everyone is aware of all the different things. But if we look past right now and we look where we're going, I think. Hidden the ground running with the water park, getting that done is what we should do. Focusing on what tomorrow, tomorrow being next year, our two hundred and fiftieth anniversary. We have a really good time to just have a great Fourth of July, two hundred and fiftieth anniversary. We get. A good product. This person up here that's going to say, I'm not bidding on a work because I'm not putting my name on something. That right there, that sounds just like you would want to hire that guy. That guy says, I'm going to do it right, or I'm not interested in doing it all. That's kind of who you're looking for there. I really appreciate what's that we're going to get? What are we getting? We're going to get a really good bid to be really close. And we're not going to have mud on our face, but we're going to build a really good quality. But this work that we're doing, it's work. But to see what's past that and that. I mean, think about the July force weekends and, and the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary and bringing our town together. And that's what all the hard work is about. So thank you for everything. And I know we got a little bit of work to do. We can get there as long as we see that first. But we can get there as long as we see that first, where we're going.
A little bit?
Yeah, you know it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Dan. Yes, Stu. Come back to the mic so we get you on the recording.
I sent a letter to the council members as well as yourself about a concern I have about, uh, uh, residential swimming pools. And the reason I brought this to the attention is I, and I just happen to have a neighbor who has a uncovered pool. Uh, and for the last several years now, uh, they don't always maintain the pool. And it turns green and creates algae and it creates the eggs that we generated from that that causes mosquitoes. And as you all know, mosquitoes cause very dangerous diseases and it's a public health, uh, hazard. I called the, uh, Calvert County, uh, uh, Health Department and a couple of other departments to ask if there's any enforcement action they can do to mitigate the problem. And they indicated to me it's not, that basically they can contact a neighbor and they can come out and offer to treat the pool if they're willing to do that. And that may work. But I thought about all the pools within the area, uh, that are not maintained. In other words, the water is stagnant because they're not putting chemicals in it and the pumps are not running. So the water sits there stagnant. Most people will cover their pools. So I think it's not just my own interest, but I think it's a community interest. It's a very small thing to do, small piece of legislation, resolution or however, we can legislate something to, uh, prevent this from occurring, uh, within our town, to require that either a pool is covered or that the pool is treated so that the water is not stagnant or it's not creating mosquitoes to, uh, to, uh, egg and, um, and affect us all. So I'm hoping you all will take that issue up. I don't know.
We will, we will. And, and we're in agreement. I mean, you know, we're in agreement and this is going to come up at our next work session. So the appropriate time for you to come and speak would be at the next work session.
Well, you got it, so, but thank you.
Yeah, no, but no, no, we would, we would welcome you to come because, and, and bring pictures.
Sure.
Or something because I, I, we saw it, Samelia and I stopped by and we saw it. It, it was hard to see, it was hard to see from your yard what the problem was. But I mean, but yeah, it's an, I, I understand it's a pool that's not maintained and it's just a big stagnant pool of water.
Not a real hardship on the, on the town?
No.
Very simple thing to resolve.
Right. So, but we, we would welcome you to come to that next work session.
Thank you for that.
Thanks. Is there anything else from the council?
Motion to adjourn.
What took you so long? Is there a second? What took you so long? All in favor, aye? The ayes have it. Thank you. Thank you all for being here. Thank you for your patience. This was supposed to be a shorter meeting because we started earlier. Three hours and fifteen minutes. Thank you so much. Thank you all for being here.